I heard that you guys have fire. Well, I would have liked to, but we had another event going on down in Valencia. And we had one of our executives there, so I had to go to that and represent our region. So we had Bill and Debbie up there. It was good for Debbie getting her, because she represents part of Kern County, so she's able to get an opportunity to meet some Kern County folks.
I know when Anne said that, due to unforeseen circumstances. I'm not particularly major.
And I'll be the director, the bunch of permanent employees.
It's a tradition already.
It's good for me. This year, which is this, I mean, she doesn't know how to do this, but she's going to be the clerk with the post county next year, so I volunteered my services. I never said it. Yeah, and then you, like, ask me, is it the new, is it your?
I was thinking Lydia's.
Morning, Eric.
Why? They do the prizes for us, which is awesome.
Sarcos. Not busting up.
Part of it, you're ready for light, right?
Glad that you got enough to eat.
I told Al, I don't know if he remembers, I told him, make one submission, instead of five, we do a three. But the other one, I'm done putting money to the door bill and having these. It's all takes.
She has definitely wanted to be in the library.
That's typical last month.
They run a four channel for two years. You know what it's like, something that's been paid off? Probably the third year, we haven't upped it.
You know, there's no one here.
I won't say that. I don't want to bring that up, so. I don't bring the free paper, which is, I'm not putting more money in a year than thirty million.
Yeah, thirty million. Yeah, I feel that is just a need, and that's something where you don't be all day before you come here.
Last week, I forgot where you were. Trying to see who wanted to go.
Those are their seats, I think they want.
Alan's? Alan, I want to pull thirty and thirty-one. I just want to see. What I paused about last time, Chris, she says, I told her my concerns, I have to address my concerns, okay? I must have pulled thirty and thirty-one. Did you get through the storm much at your place? We didn't even rain. We're going this great. We had wind and lightning.
If you please join me in the flag salute and a moment of silence. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin this morning with item one, Mr. Penney. Art, please identify yourself and give us your address for the reference.
Morning, my name's Art Penney. I live at sixteen forty-seven Corrie Court in Dinuba. Members of the board, Chairman Nishida, good morning. This seems like this day after the second coming almost yesterday. Incredible. Oh, my gosh. Very incredible. As I said, my name is Art Penney, Vice President of Penney's disposal Incorporated. My family have served this county for more than fifty years. We were the first to build a transfer station, interior recovery facility in the county, and has since built a second one. Our new facility is the only one permitted in the county to accept multiple way streams. I'm here today to proudly introduce another new first for the refuse counties, haulers in the Tulare County area. Penney's disposal has purchased two new CNG vehicles. I noticed in your agenda it says LNG, but these are CNG vehicles. Although these vehicles are substantially more expensive to purchase and operate, Penney's disposal with the aid of a grant, and I'm assuming a proud signature from the chairman of that board, the air board, Supervisor Wurdebele, appreciate that, Supervisor Wurdebele. With the aid of that grant, we were able to purchase these, and we were able to justify the added expense of purchasing these two new trucks. The relatively new fueling station in Dinuba was also a determining factor in our decision to purchase these new trucks. These vehicles will produce approximately fifty-three percent less NOx, which is oxides of nitrogen, eighty-five percent less total particulate matter, and eighty-nine percent lower COs, which is carbon monoxide. However, all this does come at a higher cost, as you well know. These vehicles are approximately twenty-five percent more expensive than clean diesel vehicles to purchase and operate. They added about sixty-five thousand dollars to the cost of these trucks. They also use more fuel, they get less miles per gallon. Of course, the cost of fuel these days, CNGs, is looking a little bit better. They require special maintenance, the tanks are pressurized about thirty-six hundred PSI, they must be inspected every three years. If a tank is damaged, one tank is about ten thousand dollars, and there's three of these tanks on these trucks. So they are a little bit more expensive. Total cost of the vehicles is about two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, that doesn't include taxes. All the refuse haulers in the county require to either retire old vehicles or install particular traps on each of their vehicles that qualify. Those traps are very expensive, between nine and eighteen thousand dollars. I stand here today in front of the board, in front of the county, to affirm the commitment of our company, as well as the other haulers in the county, because we're all doing our part. But we're doing everything possible to better the environment in Tulare County, because cleaner air is definitely everybody's responsibility. Penney's disposal has just gone the extra mile to purchase these trucks, and I'm proudly here to present one of those trucks to the board and to the county, and if it pleases the board, I'll answer any questions, and I do have a truck parked out front for you guys to take a look at, if you're willing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to start off this morning saying that I certainly appreciate the innovations that your company has done in the last couple of years with your separating station and your new trucks, so I appreciate the fact that our local people are stepping up to the plate. With that, I'm going to bring you back to the board.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Another question. It's a beautiful thing. I'm not known for my timeliness, and as I pulled into the parking lot at five minutes tonight. There it was, and several people tried to park right next to it, but it looks great. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
It looks too brand-new, you need to put it to work.
Yeah, it looks like it's picked up much.
It looks good, I took a look at it before I came in.
Great, great, thank you.
I'd just like to say, too, that every time we do this, every time we get a new vehicle out there that is a cleaner air vehicle, it makes it better for all of us, so thank you very much for what you do.
Great, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Chairman, I just want to thank Art and his dad for being here this morning and bringing the vehicle by. I was at a Rotary Club meeting this morning in Dinuba, and the sister of this truck was actually being worked, was being used, hauling trash. And then I thought of that as I was on my way home, and here with an older diesel truck, not one of your vehicles, Art, but just a diesel truck, and the amount of particulates that are being spewed from that truck just tell us that there's a long ways to go in terms of replacement of older vehicles, and as you pointed out, there's a great expense to doing that, there's a great expense to trying to retrofit vehicles, and I appreciate the fact that the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board, as a conduit, funds from various sources has been able to help entice companies and different people to step up to a higher level by making grants available to not pay for the whole project, we understand that, but hopefully make up that difference between what you would pay for a new piece of equipment and what you would pay to have one such as a CNG type of a vehicle. So I'm just really grateful that it's worked out, and I look forward to a lot more of these in Tulare County. I've been one of those proponents on the air board that we need to keep our eye on the ball, and sometimes people have their own little areas that they get caught up in, and one, of course, and, you know, I'll probably be in trouble for this, but school buses have often gotten a lot of attention, and I said, you know, if you look at a school bus that runs part of the day, part of the week, part of the year, and you compare that with the garbage, you know, waste hauling truck that runs six days a week and ten hours a day, you know, where do you get the biggest bang for your buck? And I suspect in many cases, it's going to be with that waste hauling vehicle. And so I think this is, you've stepped up, and this is a great example for other haulers and in our county, our fleet of trucks, and cities and so forth, things that we can do to help meet these very stringent air qualities, so thanks and congratulations.
Great, thank you, thank you very much.
Did they let you drive it this morning?
They're smarter than that. Mr. Chairman, if it would be appropriate, I'd like for us to have a brief recess, so we might go out and see this vehicle in action.
Yeah, park right out front.
It's entirely appropriate, we'll take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you.
I actually, I left my house about five-thirty, so I was in a building, found great stuff.
I didn't realize it was me, probably. My day, I was like, hey.
You like nothing like it?
I just feel like it's me, probably.
I didn't feel like it was me, probably.
I didn't feel like it was me, probably.
I just think if we sit down and have an honest conversation, and you say to Tom, it's the appointment is going bad, but in reality, the client's not doing their part, you know, we're being too delicate, trying to be hard to get on, putting backwards here, and you could say, I'm like, this is the thing.
I just think if we sit down and have an honest conversation, and you say to Tom, it's the appointment is going bad, but in reality, the client's not doing their part, you know, we're being too delicate, trying to be hard to get on, putting backwards here, and you could say, I'm like, this is the thing.
I just think if we sit down and have an honest conversation, and you say to Tom, it's the appointment is going bad, but in reality, the client's not doing their part, you know, we're being too delicate, trying to be hard to get on, putting backwards here, and you could say, I'm like, this is the thing.
I just think if we sit down and have an honest conversation, and you say to Tom, it's the appointment is going bad, but in reality, the client's not doing their part, you know, we're being too delicate, trying to be hard to get on, putting backwards here, and you could say, I'm like, this is the thing.
It's like last week or the week before.
Last week.
Well, not the ninety-three and a half, it was.
No.
You're right, it was the teens, it was the week before.
We need to start drilling this country.
Can you imagine the money that you're making in our own country, where you're making right now?
You could find a lot of stuff in the state of California.
In RDC suing the law office.
I mean, these guys are pushing.
They know what they're saying.
I think he's going to do it right now, I think.
Where's Gina?
I didn't see him outside.
We can start without him.
Said he was making the case.
We're back, back in session, we're going to take item two, Mr. Lewis.
And then are you going to let me take an item?
Then you want to take an item? You talked to her about something.
Yeah, after. Good morning, board.
Good morning, sorry about that.
That's okay. Supervisor Conlon, I'm very happy to give you the time to do what you need.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Good morning, CAO, you're very welcome. I've had the opportunity the last six years on many occasions to come before your board with good news about our literacy program, primarily because we have the best literacy coordinator in California, Pat Hobbit, with us, and a great staff, and wonderful, wonderful volunteers. We came before your board a couple of months ago to talk about our Jailhouse Rocks program, and now I'm before you because we've won a national award that we're very, very proud of. And to talk to you more about the award, I'll introduce Pat Hobbit, our volunteer, excuse me, our literacy coordinator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You saw my paycheck, I do volunteer. I'll hear about that later. Well, Jailhouse Rocks, really rocks, we had the opportunity, we belong to an organization called Pro-Literacy Worldwide, and this is an advocacy group for literacy, all kinds of literacy programs all over the world, and we've been really active in terms of attending their conferences, and I get ideas from them, and I don't think all this stupid stuff up myself, I actually do ask people their opinions. And we have the opportunity to nominate a Literacy Support Person of the Year, a Customer of the Year, and a Program of the Year. And our Customer of the Year, by the way, David Springer, you may have seen the great write-up in the Fresno Bee, just got his GED, we're all very thankful, that means he's no longer a household word, and we nominated a Support Person of the Year, and that would be Brian Lewis, unfortunately, he was not selected, but I was very pleased when I got a letter saying, "Congratulations, Jailhouse Rocks Tulare County Library is Program of the Year for Pro-Literacy Worldwide." And actually, it's Pro-Literacy America that gave us the award, which is a subsidiary of Pro-Literacy Worldwide. And I called Cheryl, my partner at the Sheriff's Department, I said, "Guess what we did, we got an award," and after she screamed, and I screamed, and we all got excited. This is kind of a big deal to us, we have touched the lives of a hundred and twenty-four inmates at all these facilities except for the main jail, since August of last year. And out of the hundred and twenty-four, ninety-nine actually completed our six-week module of literacy classes, and out of those, seventeen are still in custody. A total of sixty people now have been released from jail who have completed our program. Out of those folks, we've had ten come by the office and say, "I really want to see if there is a corner of Locuston, Murray, and what do you really do here?" Because something that they all learn is, we're on the corner of Locuston, Murray. We've been able to refer some customers to our Tulare Partner Program, Jane Zickratch is here in the audience with us. We've referred two folks to our program in Porterville, and Becky is not here today. So we've actually been kind of a referral agency as well for folks that got out. We've updated some resumes, we do resumes for everybody during our Workforce Development Literacy Module. Let's see, we've helped a little girl find the right school, the parents couldn't find the right school to get the little girl in, she's a challenged learner. We've given out a lot of books to inmates' kids that have come in the office and wanted services, so I think that while we're outcome-based in terms of touching lives and getting people off the street and hopefully not going back to jail, our soft outcomes are the important ones to us at this time. I have the opportunity next Tuesday to go to Alexandria, Virginia, accompanied by Brian, you know, he doesn't go to conferences by himself, he has to have adult supervision, so he doesn't think of stuff for me to do. And we're going to accept the award on behalf of our four trainers. Two of our trainers are here today, if they would stand up, Levon Gaston and Charles Boyer. These folks go out to the jail with us, and we alternate every other week or so, and they're faithful to the customers that we serve. Our other two folks, I think they either got reined in or reined out, I don't know why they're not here. After we get back from our little trip to Alexandria next week, we hope to have a design, program design meeting to see what's working and what's not working. We do this every six months to make sure we don't spin any wheels. Our biggest supporter and cheerleader is Cheryl Shergino. I'd like to introduce Captain Hinesley and Cheryl Shergino from the Sheriff's Department, without whom obviously we wouldn't have a program.
Do you have any questions of us about the program?
No question, a comment or two, but no questions.
Part of the award was some funding, and we are asking the board to accept the necessary budget. Board to accept the necessary budget adjustments to put that into our budget.
Thank you, bring it back to the Board, Ms. Conley.
Well, how exciting is this? It's, it's just so great, and, uh, Pat Hayback, you know, if, if the kids were here, they would say, you rock. You have more energy and, and, uh, I'm, I'm looking for the word, whatever that is, spunk, something, and, uh, we appreciate you so much. This is, I just think this is so great. Not just because you won the award, really because of the outcomes that the program has, I mean, that's what makes it so outstanding, but it is so nice to be recognized for that. And, uh, Mrs. Gaston and Mr. Boyer, thank you for being here and, and for the work that you do, you contribute to this. Cheryl and, and Jimmy, all of you, Brian, the, the whole group that, that made this program happen, um, along with your head cheerleader, Mrs. Hayback, um, this is just fantastic, and congratulations to all of you.
Well, it's always nice when an award comes with a check.
Can we add a zero?
Yeah, I, I feel fortunate because I, uh, Pat has me on her email list, and I love to get those emails when, when things happen at the library and the literacy center, and I enjoy going to the events and, and meeting the people that are in the program, learning how to read, or teaching others and tutoring others how to read. Uh, it's, it's a great group of dedicated people, um, that, that realize that when they volunteer that time, the, the significance of that time they put into those that are learning how to read. Had a conversation, my wife and I dropped off a basket for a fundraiser here a few weeks ago, and there was a gentleman sitting in there waiting for his tutor, and he just was telling us how, uh, reading has changed his life, how it turned him around, how he had gone from a, a nobody to, uh, with no self-esteem to having the self-esteem that something like reading can give you. So, I wanna commend the, the tutors, the time they put in. Uh, you, you really do make a huge difference in the lives, even though it might be a life here and there, talking to those people and the changes that they, they make in their lives is just wonderful. So, thank you from the, the bottom of my heart, uh, the time you put in is, is very appreciated.
Well, I, I think, just to add my, my ditto's to the previous comments, as I look around the room, I just think about the, you know, a former president who talked about a thousand points of light, and I think oftentimes as I look in our county, uh, this is just one of those points of light, when there's so many different positive things happening, working towards, uh, improving our county, uh, this just ranks right up there with so many others, and, and thank you for what you do, Brian, and, and your team, for everybody, and again, especially the volunteers who give their time, because they are making a difference in people's lives, and that's, that's the important thing. Thanks.
And we realize that, you know, a lot of these people that are in jail, the criminals, they're ignorant people, they're ignorant, they're not stupid, and they can be trained. And, uh, some of their minds have been trained in the wrong direction, and by doing, doing what you're doing, teaching them how to read, teaching them how to write, hopefully they'll be able to get out there and possibly get a job. You know, this is the thing we're looking at at the gangs, we're trying to knock that foundation up and under them by getting these kids and keeping them in schools so that they don't end up in these places like this. But, great job, and, and really appreciate all you're doing. Thank you.
I think when we look at our inmates, and, uh, apparently the, the ratio is, not the ratio, but the percentage is about eighty percent of the inmates are illiterate. So, if you're illiterate, it gives you very few opportunities in life, and that's where obviously a lot of them end up, is in the, uh, the penal system. And your literacy program, not only in this one, uh, the Jailhouse Rocks, but it's been superb, and we're very proud of the literacy program that we have in Tulare County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chairman. It's also given us a chance to get rid of all those Louis Lamour books we bought for Supervisor, um, Maple.
That's good.
This is an action item?
My move to approve.
Second.
Wait. You gotta hit move, Mike. This is our new system.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Look over there.
I know, I keep looking at that.
We're still training on our new system. At this time, uh, Ms. Conley, you have a presentation to make?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me. As you know, uh, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, we had our Tulare County hosted the, uh, San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties, it was our turn to host. Uh, we had a wonderful conference up in, uh, Bass Lake, um, well-attended, but, but also, I think, um, content-wise, one of the best. I know that, that we have been able to host and got such favorable, uh, comments, and, uh, I think No Stone Was Left Unturned, there was a tremendous amount of effort that went into it. I had the privilege of being called the chairman, but there really was someone who made it happen, who continues to make those things like that happen for us. And we did present our sponsors, uh, at this conference, something I don't believe we've done before, which is a token of our appreciation, uh, for their sponsorship to make that con- uh, conference happen. And at this time, with your permission, I would like to present, um, another sponsorship award, if you will, to, uh, our clerk, Michelle Baldwin, in appreciation of her leadership. She's the one that did all the work, she's the one that made it happen. I knew you wouldn't like this, so that's why I said no. But we really do appreciate you, Michelle, and all the work you and your team, um, as you heard around up there, other members of our staff, but, uh, it was a great job. No Stone Was Left Unturned, even when I wanted to ignore your efforts to say, what do you mean? That's actually, and so, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. The whole Board appreciates your efforts that went into this conference. We'll have another, um, unannounced presentation, uh, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Uh, I'm here this morning to just-
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ernie Hernandez, I live at nine zero three Orchard Street in Exeter. I'm here this morning to present you all with a copy of the, uh, most current Community Resources Directory, and to thank you for your support of this terrific tool, and also to thank, um, and acknowledge our ongoing partnership with Health and Human Services Agency that have been really instrumental in helping us to, um, make this resource available to the community. The Resource Directory is distributed to schools, churches, non-profit organizations, just about anyone that, that is working with people and are trying to direct people to resources. Uh, your book also contains a bookmark that is, um, our information and referral system, First Call, and there's also an order form, uh, included in the directory. Uh, I would encourage you to either keep the directory or pass it along to someone in your district, a church, or a school, uh, and then also pass along the, um, the order form in the event that someone is interested in, in acquiring, uh, more copies of the directory. So, thank you all so much for your support of this, and I, I think, I truly believe that it's a terrific resource for our community. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, uh, I'd like to consider item G on closed session. Or adjourned to closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have items A through...
I.
A through...
I.
I, and an addendum item that would be... Uh, no, you just have to do them after the time, you can't do them before. Now. Uh, it is.
Well, there is a question, you know, I, I actually, yes, actually.
No, there's a question about my, I actually, yes, actually.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That night.
Well, not a good jingle.
Well, I really can't work through that.
I'm glad that you're here.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know, I know.
I also think it's great to be with him.
No.
I just hear less.
It's nice that you do this. We do have every, every monthly deal at night, we're supposed to be nominated.
That's one of the teams?
Literally.
I think she wanted to watch it.
I think it actually, it'd be very, very good. I think it actually, it'd be very, very good.
Yeah, last night I gave, I thought she was, the, all of us.
When I'm good.
I bought one.
He gets a big delivery.
No, I don't like to get nervous about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did. Um, I read it, I didn't follow it, but I kind of went through parts of it. Yeah.
Yeah.
She started to show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yes, after, it's a lesson. My mom's like, what are you talking about? So many here, you know.
Is baseball?
Is this? Yeah. That's. Yeah. 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 That's why. Yeah. Yeah. I guess. I don't. Yeah. The case there make better. Yeah. 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 Right now it's pretty dark really early. It's like 3:30. Yeah. 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 Right now it's pretty dark really early. It's like 6:30. Yeah. 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 That's your doing, brother. Oh. Ask. Oh, yes, and I remembered. I was sitting here thinking. I was gonna. Oh. Oh. Now we lost a lot of people. No, I gotta start waiting. Yeah, feels good. It cooled off in here. Yeah. Well, one thing, you got a lot of bodies. You know, the other team was. I can even hear. Okay, we'll now take up the consent calendar. And we are, I had a requested poll item 30 and 31.
Motion approved. Balance consent calendar.
Second.
Removed and seconded. To approve this consent calendar, minus item 30 and 31. Book passage unanimously. Okay, item.
Keep looking there.
30.
Hi, Mr. Chair. If I can, just make a quick, the reason I'd ask to have both these items pulled, they are for leases. Item 30 is, as we are being asked to spend a quarter million dollars upfront improving a building and then extending a lease that still has two years on it to seven years. And I fundamentally oppose to paying upfront in advance for improvements to buildings we do not own. We've been stung on this before and it's cost us board dearly, so I cannot support that recommendation. And also, I would prefer to see an extending leases a three-year with two one-year options. And that's my only recommendation for item 31 would be to change that to, instead of just a five-year extension, which also still has two years, to a 3-1-1. But I'm fundamentally opposed to spending money out of our pocket regardless of where it's coming from to improve someone else's property.
Well, generally, what happens with tenant improvements, you fund them upfront if you have a very short lease. If you have a longer lease, that's when they're amortized over the lease. So that's fundamentally commercial real estate. And Mr. Syper.
I'm waiting for my turn. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO, House Syper, Assistant Support Services Director for RMA. We have brought this item before you today for your consideration on behalf of HHSA and Department of Child Support Services. A little bit of brief history. Both Health and Human Services and Child Support Services have been located in this building for approximately 15 years. The building, give or take, is close to 100,000 square feet and it's almost split in half. Child Support Services occupies the office portion of it and HHSA uses it as a storage facility, warehouse. What Child Support Services and HHSA both have upgrades that they would like to see done through the facility. HHSA has offered to make those upgrades utilizing one-time funds, as Supervisor Cox has indicated. And then Child Support Services has agreed to have their lease or their rent payment go up a little bit in order to help cover some of those offsets. In negotiations with the land, with the lease holder, it was determined that five years add on to the existing lease. So that way, again, there'd be time to recoup some of the upgrades that were done on the Child Support Services. And so that's a basic overview of what goes on in the facility. Again, both of the departments have expressed interest in upgrading the operation on behalf of their operations in the facilities along with for the staff that's located there. And both HHSA and Child Support Services have representatives here if you have questions for them.
When is this lease due or the work scheduled to commence?
The lease, the work would be scheduled to, hold on one second on that. It would begin immediately.
One quick question. So I understand that the majority of this is to provide a conditioned space for the records, storage.
As far as for HHSA?
Yes. The $242,000.
It's, a lot of it's going to be moving lighting around. It's set up as a general warehouse and HHSA has a very tight, you know, it's set up for record storage. So a big chunk of it would be moving lighting around, which will be improving the lighting in the storage. And then there is some conditioning too as well that would be going on. I believe they do have a couple offices and a break room in there too as well.
When's our lease due?
Our lease currently right now, we have two years left on the lease. And then we're looking at a five-year agreement. And I believe that the lease is set to expire December 31, 2009, the current lease.
Mr. Chair, the reason I requested the extension to be three years with two one-year extensions is based on the conversations this board has had on the possible relocation of employees in the future. And if you're tied into a five-year lease, that puts it out until 2014, which is, I believe, well beyond the timeframe we've discussed of moving people around.
Yeah, it's very apparent to me that as we handle real estate matters, that I'd have a hard time looking at $250,000 improvement for a very short period of time on a lease. And maybe if you work through the amortization of the improvements to the lease, it may pencil out on a longer term. I think those type of matters and recommendations should be made by someone probably with a little more professional knowledge than I have in the leasing industry. And this is not the first time we've discussed issues about leasing. And I'm, I would really like to get probably some professional advice on this matter. Mr. Cox brings up the point that we want to keep our leases short and flexible, but on the other hand, I don't think we're in a position to move employees into another building as a mass move for at least five years. So I'd like to get a little better handle on the cost effectiveness of this. And to do that, unbeknownst to my board, I have set up a meeting previous to this action item to speak with some professional office leasing people on matters such as this. And that meeting is scheduled for 4/19. Sometimes it is worth paying a professional, whatever the commission is, just to make sure we are making prudent leases.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CAO. I also wanted to mention the fact that all of the fiber optic for the whole North County runs through our building. So at whatever point we're going to be moving, we're going to have to be thinking about running fiber from some other source. That's another reason why we're looking at trying to extend this lease out to 2014. This negotiation was started long before we were aware that there was going to be another facility and that the county was going to go forward with that.
Sure, I just, I don't know whether time is of the essence here or not in terms of whether we need some additional time, as you say, to have someone review this matter. That would be a critical issue for me. If we need to move forward, I know sometimes Health and Human Services has funding that's available and has a window of opportunity and then the window disappears and money goes back to another agency or something. Do we know whether we're dealing with anything like that in this situation?
I guess I'd make a couple points. One is, and I think the supervisors are already aware of this, this is storage. It's for the Tulare Works files. They're on pallets. They run about three high to the ceiling. I can't see them or some of our workers are wearing what amounts to miner's hats to read the files. So those files are probably going to stay there or somewhere for the next 15, 18 years. We've gone to a different system where we won't be building that filing system any longer because we're going to image them. So we've solved the storage problem, but these things have to be held for an awful long time. And some are held because there's court cases and the rest of it, they're just stacked. That's the big issue. I think the second issue is this did start a long time ago and I would repeat that. We started the planning about two years ago to do what we're asking the board to do today. For my part, there's probably no real urgency, but I can't speak for you, so we can take it under advisement. And the last part would be, yes, we did budget this money and it is Tulare Works dollars. There is a maintenance of effort that your board pays, so it's all federal and state money at this point since you have to pay that upfront cost. So sometime, the money literally has to be expended and the bill's received by June 30. That's our timeline.
Hearing that, then I would have no problem with the idea of maybe taping this for time for us to have further review. But I did want to comment on something that Supervisor Cox said. And I can appreciate his perspective on trying to limit the length of leases. But I know in our, we are at a concept stage of looking at building new campuses and so forth and redirecting staff. I don't recall any conversation, we talked about construction of additional warehouse space. We've talked more about people's space and I realize this is kind of a combination of both office and warehouse. But I think the point's well taken. We're going to need a warehouse space in the future and it might be wiser to keep it in a place like this than for us to think about constructing additional warehouse space. I don't, again, I don't remember us ever having any conversation about construction of warehouse space. So I have no problem with the matter being tabled and having a third party take a look at the lease, whether it makes sense for us to do this economically and then bring it back to the board.
Well, I think oftentimes, as I mentioned earlier, tenant improvements can be amortized over a longer-term lease, which may suit us in this situation instead of putting the money upfront. So I want to explore that even though I know it's federal state dollars. But I want to efficiently spend their money, which is our money now, as efficiently as we can, so.
Mr. Chair, I totally agree with what's been said, especially for storage space. I don't intend us building one square foot of storage space unless it's a closet in a building somewhere. But, you know, again, my fundamental opposition is the quarter million dollars at this point. So, and I would support extending this whatever time the chair felt was necessary to bring this person.
It was your pleasure to table item 30, 31.
So moved. Until a time certain or do you want us to bring it back upon?
Well, do we want to do it to 30 days or four weeks?
Bring it back the 13th to 27th after.
Motion to continue to November 27th, both items.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Waiting for the blinking light. Okay, please ask your vote. Vote carries unanimously. Items 30 and 31 are tabled. Okay, moving to late public hearing, item number three, resource management.
Good morning. My name is April Hill. I'm a planner for Resource Management Agency Project Review. First public hearing for today is for EZ06002 for Wallace Trucking to reclassify a 1.6 acre site from AE20 to.
Okay, moving to late public hearing, item number three, resource management.
Good morning, my name is April Hill. I'm a planner for Resource Management Agency Project Review. First public hearing for today is for EZ0602 for Wallace Trucking to reclassify a 1.6 acre site from AE20 to M2 manufacturing, heavy manufacturing. It's located inside Porterville urban development boundary. Whoops. There's the vicinity, zone change area, zoning map. The site is surrounded by AE20 zone, vacant land, citrus groves, Pioneer Ditch, and there's railroad tracks and then State Highway 65 and the Porterville city limits. Porterville area land use plan does admit the site as industrial. And the applicant requests rezoning to allow storage for non-operative towed vehicles, a motor vehicle dismantling, a wrecking yard, a motor dismantling and used parts storage within a building, and automotive sales within, with an outdoor display area, which use is not allowed in AE20. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on August the 8th, I'll go back to the beginning, and modified the request and recommended change of zone to M1SR, which is the light manufacturing for the site plan review overview. There was no opposition expressed at the planning commission hearing. This is, this public hearing is to receive public comment and to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance. Next Tuesday, your board will review and take action on the request. Mr. Wallace is here in the audience, if you have any further questions for him.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question, were we able to accommodate Porterville's concerns?
Yes, their concerns were screening, landscaping.
Building inside, so we were able to accommodate that, thank you.
Right. Especially with that plan review.
Is Mr. Wallace here? I knew that was you sitting back there.
Best out of the radar back there.
You know, I have a question. Remember years ago, wasn't there an auto dismantling place close?
Yes, there was, in the same location.
In the same location?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to see if my memory was still there.
Yeah, I acquired the property and went in and cleaned all that up, took everything out and leveled everything and cleaned it all up. And I was trying to do it different and move the towing yard, move our towing there, rearrange it.
Could you identify yourself and your address for the record?
I'm Harris Wallace, 1707 North Prospect, Porterville.
Are there any questions? Bring it back to the board? Oh, excuse me, it's a public hearing. Now open the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to address this issue? Waited my 30 seconds, so I see no one, the public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to the board. Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
And a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Vote passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four.
Second zone change for today is for considering a change of zone from C2 to airport impact zone on a 1.4 acre site on the east side of State Highway 99 at Road 68 Commercial Avenue. This is the Goshen Avenue northbound exit. The Dominico Centipenia poses a change of zone. The area is located in the Goshen Urban Area Development Boundary, Goshen Redevelopment Area, Biscaya Urban Area Boundary and the horizontal and conical zones of the Biscaya Airport. Surrounded by AP Airport Impact Zone and R1, single-family residential zoned properties with vacant land and residential structures to the north. State Highway 99 directly to the west, M1 Light Manufacturing Zone lots with a mini mart, there's the residences, a highway, truck trailer repairs and sales and a, on the other side of the freeway, west side of the freeway is general commercial and mobile home livestock sale, trailer sales. Applicant requests rezoning so this existing business of selling automotive vehicles may expand to add maintenance, repairs and preparation of selling automotive vehicles, uh, selling of, maintenance, repairs and preparation of heavy construction equipment for sale, excuse me. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, modified the request and recommended the change of zone to an APSR, Airport Impact Site Review Complying Zone. There was no opposition expressed at the Planning Commission hearing. This public hearing is also to receive public comment to introduce and waive the first reading of the proposed ordinance. Next Tuesday, again, your board will review and take action on the request. Thank you.
This is also a public hearing?
Mr. Centipenia is here in the audience also.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, the applicant is here in the audience with us too.
Okay, applicant, which speak to this matter?
Ladies and gentlemen, then what April had to say.
Okay, like open public hearing, is anybody wishing to comment on this item? Do you know one? We're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. You have any questions or?
No. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number five.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, George Finney with Resource Management Agency. Item number five is a public hearing affecting the first round of acquiescence of applications for this year. In fact, this is the only round of acquiescence of applications this year. We have another one for foreign land security zones coming to you later. This particular proposal involves creation of four new preserves and one enlargement affecting a total of 1,142 acres, of which approximately 107 acres of prime agricultural land. None of the properties involved are within any of the designated growth areas in the county. All are designated as agriculture on the general plan and that will not change on the general plan update and none of them within one mile of a city. All of the properties involved are in agricultural use or use consistent with agriculture and we are recommending approval of all applications as indicated in the report. You know, this is the first step in the process of executing contracts. The contracts will be brought back to you probably in December for final action. And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions?
I'm assuming in the contracts again have the provision that in the event of loss of subvention funds to this county that these contracts should be null and void.
That's right.
And George, I know it's not quite on point, but I've asked a question in the past about most recent conversations, even when we had our San Joaquin Association meeting and conversations with our delegation, it appears that these subvention funds are going to be more and more difficult to hang on to from a county's perspective. So are we looking at something, since we have so many long-term contracts, are we looking at some way where we can begin a process whereby, other than the 10-year cycle, or maybe we have to go through the 10-year cycle, where we give them notice, where we can insert that provision in our existing contracts so that we aren't going to sit here looking at a 10-year period where we don't have subventions?
That is a legal question.
I was about to say, Mr. Chairman, if I can address that question. The existing contracts, of course, don't have that provision. In the event that subvention funds were not provided, there would be varying ways of addressing that. I've stated to your board before, the last time they were cut, that it would be my recommendation to you that the county join with the various contract holders to sue the State of California for unlawful interference with contract. That, I believe, is probably going to be the position of the other counties that have substantial funds. And they are odd counties in addition to the San Joaquin Valley counties. For example, Santa Barbara has a substantial, it had a substantial amount of fund.
Is that northern Santa Barbara or southern?
Wherever the strawberries are, I'm not sure. The, what's likely to happen in the event this happens is those counties will join together and file some sort of, recommend filing some sort of unified litigation. The other option is to send notice saying that there's been a material change in the facts when the contract was entered and attempt to get out of the contracts in that way. It's sort of a question of picking whether you want to sue or whether you want to be sued.
Council, I know that the way the contracts work is that they just are rolling and they continue to automatically renew every year for an additional 10-year period. I'm assuming since the farmers have the opportunity to do a notice of non-renewal, the county is another party to the contract with a similar kind of a right.
That's absolutely correct. And your board could give direction to staff that when the time period came up for the renewal, that the taxpayer be given notice that a notice of non-renewal would be recommended unless they agree to an amendment. I think that's what, where you're going with that and that could be done. I'd have to look to Mr. Finney who's not looking happy with what I said as to the administrative, the administrative burden that that would impose on staff. I know we have lots of contracts.
This discretion is hasting my retirement.
Well, my only concern is that I think we should be looking at any and all options to the county and I'm always a little bit nervous about putting our eggs in the litigation basket only because as I understand it, you might argue detrimental reliance, blah, 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 but when it comes to the actual terms of the contract, there's nothing in the contract that says anything about subvention fund State of California. It's just purely a contract between us, the property owner, and the tax savings.
Well, as an example Supervisor Worthley, and as you've heard me say, litigation is rarely the solution to your problems. You'll recall in lawsuits filed regarding education funding that were successful, it took 20 years to actually get the money appropriated to pay that. So yes, a shorter-term solution could be a direction to staff to simply, as that period is coming up, to send a notice, if you do not agree to amend, then we will recommend a notice of non-renewal. You then have the, what, nine-year exposure, 10-year exposure?
Keep in mind though, once a notice of non-renewal files, it automatically comes off the subvention rule. You cannot claim subvention once a notice of non-renewal.
Oh, how fun, okay. Well, I just, I think we should explore whatever we can do from negotiations with our contract holders to deal with this issue because I have a very strong feeling we're going to lose about three and a half million bucks to this county in the future, near future. And we're going to be stuck with these contracts for a long, long time.
We could work with RMA staff, perhaps not Mr. Finney as he's announced he's a short timer, to discuss a process where this kind of negotiation could take place. And I know I saw, there's Mr. Hash in the audience. And our two staffs can work together to come up with something. And I don't really think it needs to be brought back to your board unless you specifically want to see it, we'll just come up with a process.
Well, it might be good to have it come back to the board just for an update on what progress has been made.
Just because every year we got through this.
Yeah, and I mean, but it's every year, but it's gotten, I think, ratcheted up a lot more. I mean, this last year, the governor was insistent that it was not going to be in there and it was kind of a last minute maneuver that got it in there. But I think the writing is on the wall. We know the State of California is in serious financial problem, they're going to look under every rock, try to save a few bucks, and this will be one of the areas I think they're going to look, so.
I agree, I think that's the direction the board needs to explore. So let's explore it and bring it back to the board at a later date. We have an action item here.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. I hate public hearings. Okay, the public hearing is now open.
Anyone dare speak?
Okay, seeing no one wishing to address this issue, the public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to the board. Move approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously.
You guys train well.
Thank you very much. See, we're getting better, Michelle.
We're trainable. Item 31, we're just ignorant.
Good morning, Board. Henry Hash, Resource Management Agency, CAO, County Counsel. We're pleased to be before you today to talk about some progress that we have made on job order contracting. You may have noticed in the last year or two, much improvements inside county-owned buildings at least and outside. And our effort has always been to continue improvement and try to streamline the process to expedite and basically keep our customers more satisfied. And job order contracting that's before you today is one of those progress that if your board approves, we can accomplish. We tell you that it has taken much, much work as Mr. Cypress will probably show you in a box and all the documents that have been required to put this project all together. Once this takes place, it will be much savings to the county in terms of time, effort, the actual savings that we'll be working with contractors. Right now, you know, we are to go out to bid basically in all projects. In this case, we go out to bid only once a year for all the potential projects and I'm not going to get much into the detail, I would let Mr. Cypress do that. There are a few people that I really would like to thank for their support. Number one, your board has been very supportive of this, this came to your board earlier this year, CAO's board, County Counsel, as well as our purchasing, Mr. Cypress and Mr. Lloyd Finley who are here. With that, with your permission, I'll turn it to Mr. Cypress.
Thank you, Henry. Hal Cypress, Assistant Director of Support Services, RMA, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, Mr. CAO. Actually, I have Lloyd Finley dropping off two sets of the documents that we've been preparing the last, the last few months in order to get this thing rolling along. The little one that he just put up, the CD, is one copy of everything.
There's one copy.
And what we have here is we have the technical specifications and the construction task catalog. This has been developed specifically for Tulare County to meet our needs for our facilities and things of that nature and upgrades that we're going to be, that we'll be doing. This is quite an exciting opportunity for us to be moving in. As Mr. Hash mentioned, it is going to be streamlining several processes that we go through in order to, in order to actually get work performed on all the county facilities. But let me go in and kind of explain a little bit about what we're doing and what job order contracting is, or JOC as it's commonly referred to. What is JOC? JOC is a firm fixed price competitively bid indefinite quantity procurement process for small to medium-sized facility construction repairs and remodel projects. Contracts are generally a year long. It was first introduced in 1985 in the federal government and currently nationwide, there's over a billion dollars' worth of construction contracts that are annually placed utilizing job order contracting. Job order contracting combines many small projects into one master contract and that's where the savings really comes. A contractor, right now in our current process, will have to bid on each and every project as one, as single projects. Utilizing job order contracting, we will be able to say we want to do X amount of work. And so a contractor will be able to minimize his overhead costs and then we will also be able to streamline the procurement process. Because right now, when we go out to bid in order to do a project, we'll collect three bids, we'll collect the insurance work, we'll collect the paperwork, we'll work with a purchasing agent in order to, in order to get a project moving along. So we should be able to utilize volume discount, again, because the contractor is bidding on a large contract and not just one individual project. Again, the JOC contractor doesn't have to compete for each JOC project. The contractor doesn't have to spend time preparing bids for projects that they may or may not get. Again, the savings will be passed on to the county in the form of a lower bid, a better bid, the contractor The contractor can also spread his overhead over more projects, again, further reducing their cost. The county, again, will retain the right not to use a job order contract and go out to bid if we choose to, depending on the project. Job order contract projects can be started quickly. Again, if we have, if we have a job order contract in place, if something comes up, we can move quickly, as opposed to, again, going through the process of soliciting for bids, finding and qualifying bids, and again, going through the paperwork projects. So, we can, again, for projects that involve a worsening condition, we can start fast, and again, that can potentially reduce the scope of work. We have developed a localized and customized construction task catalog and related materials. Again, the catalog is a per-unit price book. The price remains the same throughout the life of the agreement for the work described in the catalog. Six months from now, the prices that are in those catalogs will be the prices that we're paying. A year from now, we're paying the same prices, because we've, we've negotiated it upfront. Again, we have really low or no contractual guarantee of work. We established a maximum potential of contract value in any guaranteed amount, and we'll be, we'll be going forward with that. Job order contract has been designed to enhance the participation of local businesses, which is important. Since no commitment is made, we don't, we won't be making a commitment to the JOC contractor regarding the exact types of work that will be required, so the contractor cannot develop an in-house workforce to do all the work, and it's workforce, it has, and it's forced to maximize the use of subcontractors. We'll be scheduling job fairs in the next 30 days for all local contractors that wish to participate by the JOC contractor, and so the purchasing agent will be hosting those job fairs. Individually, price purchase orders are based on a coefficient of the unit price, again, and we have coefficients, two coefficients, one that's done on normal time, Monday through Friday, eight to five, and then again after hours. Individual purchase orders that will be issued through the purchasing agent's office become a firm fixed price upon the issuance of the purchase order. No change orders through this process. If conditions change, or the scope of work has changed, then a second purchase order will be, will be, will be issued. This will eliminate low borrowing on a project and only to make it up on the change orders. Let me explain a little bit how JOC would fit into Tulare County. We believe it fits into business, into Business Plan Initiative Number Four, organizational performance, because it will allow us to improve our organizational effectiveness and it provides some fiscal stability. It will improve the delivery of service and provide price stability to departments that require construction projects and remodel projects. We've identified two project, departments primarily HHSA and the sheriff, that have projects that could benefit from having a JOC contract in place. Capital projects may also have use for a JOC as well. And typical net savings, and again, this has been determined by, by various counties and things of that nature that utilize a job order contract, is about 8% over traditional processes. And lastly, these are some of the current, these are some of the counties locally and some close by that are utilizing job order contracting. And that concludes my presentation on this. If you have questions or comments?
Chairman, a question. How, the 8% savings, is that, is that hard dollars, or is that in also calculating in the efficiencies that result for county employees in terms of spending so much time having to do a lot of this work?
Efficiencies in time, and then also, as I said, overhead, that won't have to be spread.
It's a combination.
Combination of both.
Mr. Chair, hold up the little book on the left, or your right. The little, no, the little book. The little book on the top. That's your, that's your typical size book that you get for a contract, for a job with the, if you're going to look at a specification book, it has all the legal cred and that stuff, that's about the size of the book you get. I'm totally, I'm totally, I mean, as, having been a general contractor for many years, we would always get this two-inch thick book, and you'd have to read every page because there'd be some Brian somewhere somewhere that would change one word, or a comma, or a period, that would change the whole meaning of the, of the contract.
That was only for you, Phil.
Only for me, I did just do it on my copy. There's a lot of positives to this. The ability to expedite projects is wonderful. If you have a bid for roofing, or framing, or some basic maintenance thing that you need to do for the capital projects on an ongoing basis, you go to the book, you have a per-square-foot price, if you need, you know, you have a thousand square feet, you just multiply it, and there you go. Go roof the building, and it, and it makes it quick. The only downside to this is there's two feet of paper there, and that scares most contractors to death.
We have a CD also.
Which of those is the task catalogs?
These are the task catalogs. This is the technical specification.
Okay.
You can see why we didn't provide each of you.
Right. Your task catalog, and how many line items do you cover in the task catalog? Just guess.
Five.
Five thousand?
Uh, like fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand. So, that would mean there's a line item for hot pop roofing, rubber roofing, ballast roofing, there's probably, you know, there's probably a line item for tearing off one-layer roofs, tearing off two-layer roofs, tearing off three-layer roofs, there's all these lines. The, the only problem with this, and I'm all for this, I'll support this to the grave, the only problem with this is that does scare people to death. There are contractors that specialize in doing just this. The only downside is we may end up with a contractor from New York who, who will adjust his things a penny here and a penny there. That's the only downside of something like this, that you could have a contractor that you don't know anything about, yes, he will use all local subs, because he's not coming from New York to do a thousand-square-foot roof. That, that's the only downside, is you, is you don't always know who your, your general's going to be, but typically, the guys that do this do a great job of it, they do it for a living, they have the process down, they'll come in and get the local, regardless if you have two or three subs go to your job fair or your, your conference, that contractor will still come out here and get a whole bunch of subs lined up to do the work once he has a contract, because they do it for a living. They, they've already got the books on the right, or on the left, they're already filled out. They already have those things down, they, they know what the West Coast, East Coast prices are. So, I'm all for this, because this does give us a finished product quicker, you know, because these people do this as a specialty for a living. And I'm confident that you will have local subs. If we tried to build a hundred thousand-square-foot building, the guy'd probably come out here himself and do it, or maybe bring crews, but, you know, this will support our local economy, so.
Another thing, if we aren't satisfied with the contractor that, that we, that we have, there's no guarantee of, of work. So, if we have a contractor, and we could set on his bond literally for, for a year, so he has incentives in order to produce and make sure things are done in a timely and efficient manner, or else we could issue another JOC.
There is a guaranteed, I'm sorry, there is a guaranteed amount of 25,000. That's the only guarantee under the, under the contract. Maximum value currently as we're proposing is a half a million, so he has an opportunity to gain profit that much if he is cooperative, efficient, effective, et cetera. If he's not, this does not give him exclusive right to anything, other than the $25,000 within a 12-month period. If we don't like him, or if he doesn't produce, then we simply have a contract that, that we do $25,000 on and park for the rest of the year, he's required to bond to the maximum value of the contract.
And that's why most contractors, your locals, will be scared away from that because of that two feet of paper. They're not going to go through the work of filling out that stack of paper on the left there. They're not going to fill in 15,000 line items, that's why you're going to end up with someone who does this.
Actually, these are already filled out. They are, they are pre-priced based on this, this particular region, and all the contractor is providing is a multiplier. So, he bids on two numbers, one for regular hours, one for overtime hours, and that's, that's all they have to fill out. We are going to have, Hal had mentioned that we are going to have an outreach program to provide instruction, information, et cetera, on this and the process in about two weeks, a couple of sessions, one in the, in the daytime and one in the evening, to allow any contractors that are interested in it to come in and find out how it works and, and learn the process. If I could, I'd like to introduce a, a couple people in the group here. The Gordian Group is, is our consultant that helped us put this together, and they do this pretty much nationwide. Joe Hollitt and Paul are, are our representatives here. They, they do this, this for a living, and they've helped us put this together. Without them, we're, we're not standing here today.
He's paid to say that.
Any other questions or comments? And thank you, Mr. Chair, for listening to my. Supervisor Cox?
I paid attention to most of it. In addition to all that paperwork, which just staggers my mind, which is why a lot of people tell us on a daily basis how inefficient we are in government, why we do the crazy things we do. Am I hearing through all of this that we are, or we are not, eliminating local people from participating, and will it lower the pool of, of applicants to, to do these kind of jobs? I mean, is it preset? The last thing I want is to get phone calls from someone saying, well, you've virtually eliminated my ability to be part of the process.
It's, again, we're proposing a half a million dollar maximum to the, to the contract as we would advertise it. That can be increased if we have additional funding, or, or if we need to, we would have to come back to the board for approval to do that. The maximum legal value of a contract for a one-year period is slightly, I don't remember exactly how much, but a little over 3 million, which, I don't have that much money, so one of the reasons we kept it at that value was to not preclude local participation. There is no limitation on, on local participation, and we anticipate that the, as Supervisor Cox mentioned, that the subcontracting locally would, would occur. But again, this is not an exclusive right to anything. This is just a procurement tool. It is one more method of, of awarding. We may still advertise a contract as we always have. So, there, there's nothing that precludes us from using any of our procurement tools, formal advertising, small purchase, or whatever to get the, the job done, this is just one more method.
And thank you for not providing me a copy of all of that.
Also, I was also going to allude, it actually should increase the participation by local vendors, because actually, we'll be dealing with the general contractor. Right now, if you're a, a small contractor and doing business with a county, you've got to provide mountains of paperwork, insurance, you know, liability, workman's comp, and the list goes on and on and on. While all this is still going to be part of this program, we won't be collecting that, collecting that on every project that we go out to bid with. And right now, we go out to bid for hundreds of projects a year, and so if you're going to participate, you do that every time. Now, you just have to do it once.
We have, we've had several people come in and want to participate in some of our smaller projects, and they can't, because they can't meet the insurance requirements, et cetera. This would actually give them a window into that, in that the general contractor is required to carry the insurance, the subcontractors are then have an agreement with him.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Your subcontractors are still required to have the insurance, they just provide that to the general.
General, right. Any other questions?
Just one comment, it takes the government to put three feet of paper upon them and say, this is, this is to expedite a process.
It's actually easier than it looks, but yeah. Okay, it's an action item. Mr. Chair, much to approve?
Second.
Move is seconded.
Give me a hand so I can push my butt.
Cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 35.
Hurry it, hurry it.
Henry Hash, Resource Management Agency. In, most of this presentation will be given by Mr. Syper. Just, if you recall, your board approved this project in March of 2006. I am here mostly to, so that we bring you an update. Status of the project is mostly completed. The reason really I'm here, I want to tell Mr. Cox that we are on time and on budget. I don't like change order, in fact, we have one change order, and that's a deductive change order to reduce the cost. Thank you, this is all worth, I guess, the presentation. Once this project is implemented, we do expect major savings for, for years to come. So, a great project, and we look forward to do more similar projects. With your permission, I'll turn this to Mr. Syper.
Thank you, Mr. Hash, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. CAO, Hal Syper, Assistant Service, Assistant Support Services Director for Resource Management Agency. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to stand up in front of you today and give this upgrade on this project. This is actually, it's a real exciting project that the county has undertaken. I wanted to start out by kind of just giving a broad overview of, of some of the things that have been done, and I'll show you the slides. I just got basically some, some pictures to show you. This project encompassed the adult pre-trial, Bob Wiley Detention Facility, and the juvenile justice facility too as well. At the adult pre-trial facility, we upgraded our control systems and integrated it with the county ECMS, which basically means that we can look online and be able to determine how things are going out at the adult pre-trial. We also upgraded VFDs on all the air handlers, there were lighting upgrades, but more importantly, the biggest thing that we did for the adult pre-trial is we combined the meter, the electric meter, with Bob Wiley Detention Facility, and we upgraded the power service from Edison that we received from Edison, which allowed us to buy power at a cheaper rate. And then we've also installed a cogeneration facility at the Bob Wiley Detention Facility that will supply power to the grid. Basically, we have a small grid at the Bob, at Bob Wiley and adult pre-trial. At the Bob Wiley Detention Facility, and let me kind of start showing some pictures here. Again, your board approved it March 21st, 2006. Total project was 7.2 million dollars. The change order is, is that we initially were going to be replacing the emergency generator at Bob Wiley Detention Facility as part of the scope. It was later determined that we could utilize the existing generator, so we didn't have to replace it, and that was a total of 385,000, I believe it. The key component is a 750-kilowatt natural gas-fired cogeneration unit that is out at Bob Wiley. Also, along with projected energy savings, this project will also increase the emergency power generation capacity at the Bob Wiley Detention Facility. We'll be able to, to weather power outages at that facility as the equipment goes through the switching mechanism to make sure things are, are actually moving the way things are going. So, Bob Wiley Detention Facility and power outage will be up and going. Project is on schedule, and it's going to be completed mid-November. Right now, we're in the training phases, training of our staff and completing things of that nature, and tying, tying up all the loose ends on it. This is a picture of the co-gen unit that's being dropped in, dropped in through the roof of the, of the building that it's actually housed in, and so we actually had to strip the roof off the building to drop the, to drop the co-gen unit in through that. I also want to kind of give you a brief update. Also, at the juvenile justice facility, we did lighting. The reason why we did lighting out there is it's a 24-hour, and all of them are 24-hour, seven-day-a-week facilities. Lighting upgrades continue to move on 24-hour operations. It's always good to be constantly looking at where our lighting is, because the efficiencies they will pay for, along with providing energy savings. With the generate, with the addition of this cogeneration unit at Bob Wiley, the county now generates 1.2 megawatts of electricity at three separate sites. We generate, we have a, we have a co-gen unit at, behind the main jail, we have a co-gen unit at juvenile justice, and then we also have this co-gen unit at Bob Wiley. And against, one megawatt will power approximately 1,000 homes. So, every day, we're, we're producing enough electricity to generate electricity for 1,000 homes. Also, in addition to that, the county operates three thermal energy storage tanks. You may have seen the one behind the main jail. There's one out at, out at the building that I'm at, at Government Plaza, then again, out of the juvenile justice. Again, what that does is it allows us to cool the water down at night when electricity is cheaper, and then use that cooled water during the day in order to cool our buildings down. Our largest facilities are on time-of-use meters, which means every 15 minutes, our meters are automatically read for us, and we are in a, we are in a, and this kind of dovetails into what Lynn may be saying later, but our, our meter rates, again, noon to six, the highest period, and we have different peak periods in which we buy electricity. By cooling down our, our water at night from midnight to six, we're buying the cheapest energy possible, and we have roughly about a million and a half gallons of water. A couple other things that we're looking, that we're excited about, I just want to throw something out. Countywide, in the first quarter of this, of this fiscal year, there's been a reduction of almost 14% in consumption of electricity at all county facilities. With that, I'd be willing to take any questions or comments.
I, I just, that was an interesting last comment you made, and that's before we have this online, is that correct? we have this online. Is that correct? So, we would expect further reductions when this comes online? Thanks.
Supervisor Cox, have you done your inspection out there yet?
Not yet. You're more than welcome. Anytime.
Well, it's a—it's a great concept because UC Merced uses this same principle to cool the whole school and it worked great.
Thank you. Great.
Well, it was good news, Hal.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. That's an update. Moving to item 36.
Okay, Chair. Gene Rousseau, County Administrative Officer. Chairman Ashida had asked that this item be put back on the agenda to discuss our vote that was taken in June of this year to join the power authority. And I'll turn it over to the chair.
This is probably one of the bigger decisions this board will make in the next several years. It's—it's an item that has basically gone unnoticed by the general public. And I think because we believe—no, I think—that I believe that we should have an open process when we make decisions as large as this. So, that's why I've asked for it to come back before the board. I have questions that I'm not sure have ever been answered properly. And that's what we're here today to do, is to reaffirm or not our continuation with this JPA on the supplying of electrical power to the non-incorporated areas of Tulare County. It's my understanding that Tulare County would be 40% of this JPA. So, we are the largest stakeholders in this process. So, we're here today to hear from different representatives to get more information on what we're actually getting into. And I believe Ms. Gregory has a presentation.
Good morning, Chairman Ashida, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau, and Lynn Gregory with County Administrative Office. And I just wanted to provide you with an update on the activities that have happened since I was before your board on October 16. Recall that I provided you with a status on October 16. Since then, the power authority has held one board of directors meeting. At that meeting, the information that was discussed was that they will be holding one public hearing in each county to discuss rates once the rates start—are established. After the initial public hearing is held in each location, they will have one central location for a board meeting—or a board of directors meeting to allow any interested parties to attend and get further informations and be there when the rate decision is made. Normal public notices rules will be utilized along with —we will also—they will also utilize alternative sources such as, you know, my—or actually, they're exploring those alternative sources right now. KRCD has signed a power services agreement with Citigroup Energy effective October 23 of 2007, and they continue to explore various renewable projects. San Joaquin Valley Power Authority Board Chairman, based upon our last meeting, has asked general counsel for the power authority to provide a memorandum to each authority member outlining obligations for each of the members of the authority. That memo should be sent later this week. Unfortunately, we're here today, so we have—a general counsel is here to answer or address any concerns you may have in regards to that. Also, other activities that are going on. Workshops have been scheduled for businesses. There are large energy users in Tulare County to educate them on community choice aggregation, the program, and what's involved because they are the first to move forward, of which the county is participating in those meetings. Mr. Syper will be attending with his staff. The business community has shown a great deal of interest in these workshops. It's really just to educate them on the program and the benefits of the program. Also, recently, Southern California Edison—who you'll recall, we are 80% Southern California Edison. Hal Syper attended a 2008 electricity forecast meeting hosted by them. Average rate increase bundled is 4.2%. This is a projection by their moderator. SE has hundreds of rate schedules, as does PG&E, and this will be spread over all of them. Some will be higher than others. Large power users, such as the county, may see increases of about 2.5% if the PUC adopts the SE's request. Residential users will see increases from 0% for those at or below the baseline up to 12% for those over 300% of the baseline. On average, the ready increase requested for a residential user will be 3.8%. The PUC will formally consider these increases in late November or early December. Once they issue their final recommendations, the rate will go into effect in February 2008. Recall that the power authority is offering a 5% reduction off generation rates, and it will be capped at a 2% increase each year for the next eight years. I have the board chairman from the power authority, Tom Hagland, who also attended this meeting. And also, general counsel for the power authority is here to answer and address some of the concerns—legal concerns that were raised at the last meeting. So, I'll go ahead and—
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good morning. Thomas Hagland, Deputy City Manager for the City of Hanford and Chairman of the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority. I think we last formally met when this board considered program agreement number one, and that was approved by your board in June. We have made, as Lynn indicated, a lot of headway over that time. The power services agreement that was recently executed was actually executed between the power authority and Kings River Conservation District. It is a document that sets up the structure by which the Kings River Conservation District will operate as our—as the authority's exclusive agent in the provision of CCA services to all of our constituencies. The energy services agreement between KRCD and Citigroup has not yet been finalized and can only go into effect and be approved so long as it provides the agreed-upon savings, which is a 5% reduction in the tariff schedule off both Southern California Edison and Pacific Gas and Electric, as well as includes a cap on annual increases at 2%. Again, as is provided for in program agreement number one and the power services agreement, if that cannot be achieved, the program will not go forward. Lynn indicated that Southern California Edison provided a electricity outlook just a couple weeks ago. I attended that and it was an excellent presentation by Edison for their customers in which they were trying to engage the customers and provide a reasonable and realistic outlook for electricity costs, generation costs, over the coming year. And as Lynn indicated, the anticipated rate increases in her presentation were provided for—by by Southern California Edison. There was a customer—again, this was for customers. And while the county as a customer attended, but there were a lot of agricultural customers, business, and industry customers in attendance in that presentation. And one of them asked the moderator a question. And that was, "What will the effect of CCA? We've been hearing about community choice aggregation, CCA. What is it and should we pay attention to that?" And the Edison moderator indicated—provided a brief explanation of what the program was, what the authority was, and what we were seeking to do—a 5% reduction in rates and a 2% cap. And he answered the customer's question as to whether or not they should pay attention to CCA this way. He said, "Well, certainly, you want to pay attention." He goes, "You evaluate the power authority's program based on two criteria. One, whether or not they're able to offer a 5% reduction in the rates. If they are, then you need to make a business decision about whether or not that's right for you." But he also pointed out something else, and it was quite interesting. He said, "Regardless of what their rate is, one of the things you want to also take a look at is the cap on rates." He said, "Because that is what the authority is seeking to do, is provide price stability. And that may be more important to you as a customer than perhaps whether or not it's a 5% rate reduction." So, the Edison moderator, providing an Edison program to their customers, indicated that they should pay attention to CCA in those two regards. One, can they deliver the 5% reduction? And two, can they deliver price stability, the 2% cap on future rate increases? That that may be important to you as a business. During the question-and-answer session, I indicated my appreciation to Edison for providing that type of a informative, accurate assessment of what it is we are trying to do. I'm going to allow our general counsel to talk to the board about the joint and several liability questions and the—any of the obligation questions that came up amongst your board at your October 16 meeting. But I will say—say this in introducing her. The—the power authority documents, underlying documents, both the JPA at Section 2.3 and program agreement number one at Section 12.1, provide that there cannot be joint and several liability that flows to the underlying membership, that the obligations of the authority are just that, obligations of the authority. It is our view and commitment that we cannot go forward with a program that would incur joint and several liability on the part of the underlying members. It would be inconsistent with one California law in terms of the formation of joint powers authorities. The California law explicitly recognizes that you've set up joint power authorities for that very purpose, to not have obligations and liabilities flow to the underlying membership. The firewall is at the JPA. But it would also be inconsistent with our regional collaborative effort here. And remember, please, that it is a regional collaborative effort of 13 governmental entities using the tools given to them by the legislature to bring value and benefit to our mutual constituencies. We can do that by providing rate reduction to the generation cost of electricity, and that is exactly what we're trying to do. It is unique. It is specific. It is statute. And with that, I would introduce Jane Lockhart with the firm Downey Brand. Downey Brand is a firm specializing in utility representation in electricity and other utility-related matters. Jane is considered an expert in this field, and I think that she can address joint and several liability specifically, the obligations that your board was concerned about specifically, and could certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. As Tom indicated, I am Jane Lockhart, and I'm usually not given such a glowing recommendation before I come up to speak, so that's kind of a nice change. One thing that I understand has been a question that has been presented to you guys, at least through some comments and letters that have come from Pacific Gas and Electric Company, really address or revolve around the joint and several liability provision that is in the service agreement with the utility. And this is actually an agreement that was presented by PG&E to the Public Utilities Commission and was approved as a part of their tariff. It was approved without any kind of discussion. No one protested it or objected to the terms, so there isn't a lot of background to go with it. And as I go back and look at the service agreement, it is actually internally inconsistent. The provision that PG&E talks about in Section 20, that talks about joint and several liability, require—would require that each individual entity sign the agreement. And yet, the agreement itself explicitly is between the CCA and PG&E itself. In order for PG&E to require each individual entity to sign this agreement, they would have to go back to the California Public Utilities Commission and get an approved change to this agreement. They cannot simply add signature blocks, add additional parties, and expand this agreement to that level without having the California Public Utilities Commission bless that change. So, this is is not something that they can just do. And in addition, in Section 21, which follows the section that has been referred to often, it talks about if there's a conflict between the agreement itself and the utility's tariff. And the utility's tariff is the underlying rules that the utility follows in executing the community choice aggregation program. And the tariff itself also does not contain any language that would require joint and several liability of the individual members of a joint powers entity. So, in this instance, if there is a conflict, you are to look to the tariff. The tariff does not provide for that. So, all of these things that—the joint and several liability thing that PG&E has been—as been stating is as an absolute obligation of each individual member actually is—does not currently exist. And in order for it to exist, they would need to get a change from the California Public Utilities Commission. And I think that Tom has clearly indicated earlier that if they obtained that change, that the program itself would not go forward because the point of the program is to set up an individual, separate legal entity in the JPA and that the JPA itself will take on those liabilities and obligations under which it enters into its contracts. And so, if that—if that is not the case, then the program is very different from what you have all agreed to enter into or all the different entities have entered into so far. And I'm trying to think through whether I have forgotten anything else. I think that that's the kind of the major piece that I understood you guys had questions on from your last meeting. The only other point I would make is just to reiterate what Tom said earlier, that the JPA is a separate legal entity, and it has been set up as a separate legal entity that takes responsibility for its own obligations. So, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to address—
Also—
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Ms. Lockhart, for the—the board has also been advised that there is a dispute—I would characterize it right now as an informal dispute between PG&E and the authority regarding the manner and amount of—for want of a better term, let's call it insurance—in the service agreement. And perhaps you could expand on that and explain to the board what—where the status of that is?
That's currently in discussion. It is before the Energy Division at the California Public Utilities Commission, trying to work on a resolution on what the appropriate amounts of that insurance would be. Since the—the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority is the first community choice aggregator to go forward, but it is not the first entity to serve customers independently. There are energy service providers that are serving large customers right now and have through the whole—you know, I don't know, five, six, seven, eight years now, that they have been serving folks. And they have these same type of rules and requirements. And there are numbers that have come out of that process that have been very reasonable, that the utilities have agreed to, that the energy service providers have agreed to, and that we believe something similar can be done in this instance. And at this point, we have no indication that a reasonable bond amount or insurance amount could not be determined by Energy Division at this point or—and brought before the commission if necessary for approval.
Counsel, did you have any other question? Do you have any questions? Thank you, now.
The request is before your board to reaffirm the vote that was previously had for continued participation in the community choice aggregation program.
Chair, no other presentations? Is that it?
I expect—yes, it would— I expect, yes, it would be another presentation by PG&E.
I'll hold my questions till all the presentations are done, then.
Always wanted to do that. Good morning, Chairman Ashida and members of the council. I'm Al Galvez with PG&E. I'm just here to maybe give you some highlights or a snapshot of PG&E and, and what we do, not only in the national stage, but, but in your particular county and your community. I'd like to start off with going over some of the energy efficiency programs that we exist, that exist, currently exist, and for the last several years, what we've done. Last several years, we've spent over $2.5 million in energy efficiency to our, to our customers here in, into Larrabee County. Energy efficiency meaning lighting, refrigeration, chillers, windows, insulation. And those customers would be, so, people like Warruna, Odoawa, City of Dainhuba, we've done Foster Farms. Excuse me. So, I just want to kind of go over some of the other things that we do here in the county, so we're not this big bad wolf that people maybe try to portray us, that we're just here.
I prefer that you, you address things that are specifically before the, the board on questions that we have on, on the aggregation.
Okay, so, and that, not-
We know a lot of the good things that you do, do in the community.
Okay, and so, with that, then, and then what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Mr. John Nelson.
Schroder. Excuse me, thank you very much. We'll be very respectful of your time. I was here, as Al was, when you voted on this issue back in June, and you may recall the time, that we did not ask you to vote no. We suggested that you delay your vote and get some more information. I'm here today to give you an update on what we've learned over the last four or five months, none of which has given us any confidence that this program is going to meet its objectives or meet the goal of CCA, which PG&E supported when it was in the legislature and at the PUC. All the concerns that we raised over the summer, we continue to have, and in fact, we feel them even more strongly than before. And, and I won't go through all of them again. I will sum up simply by saying that CCA rates could easily be higher than PG&E and Edison's rates. There are a lot of reasons for that, but they essentially boil down to the fact that there's absolutely no guarantee in any of the myriad of documents and meetings that have been held, that where rates will be. Rates will be entirely contingent on a contract with Citigroup that no one has seen. Eventually, down the road, rates may be augmented by a power plant that KRCD wishes to build, which is very controversial in the community and may in fact never be built. And in fact, if it were built, it may be very expensive. SMUD, a public utility in Sacramento, just built a gas-fired power plant, I think very similar to the KRCD plant, and it's, I believe, the most expensive, or one of the most expensive power plants in California. And SMUD's a great utility, they do a great job. We could spend all day talking about the risks in the CCA rates, but the bottom line is, they could very easily be higher than PG&E and Edison's rates. Your customers and you as a county will have absolutely no guarantee they will be lower. And worst of all, you won't find that out until the program is underway. And that's because the, again, it's all hinges around the Citigroup contract that no one has been able to see, no one's been able to analyze. We asked for it back in May when it was first discussed, and it's still not available. Once it's seen, only then will you know what rates are going to be, and by then, it may very well be too late. You may be, you may have missed your opt-out window, we're not sure. You have, you'll have a short opt-out window. You as a county will have no opt-out in your agreement with PA1, you have to stay a customer. So, you may find out after, it's too late, after obligations have been incurred, after millions of dollars that have already been incurred become assessed to you as a 40% stakeholder, only then might you find out rates aren't actually going to do what they'd hoped. And that, as a, just as a fundamental business decision, is horribly flawed. That's not the cart before the horse. That's you have to buy the cart whether you want it or not, and, and you may or may not ever see a horse. It doesn't make any sense, and there's, there's really no reason for it. Again, as I mentioned, customers are going to be locked into the rates. If they miss their opt-out period, they won't be able to opt out again for three years. At that point, the power authority has the right to charge them, and intends to charge them, for whatever obligation they've incurred on that customer's behalf. That could be a portion of a power plant if they're under, if that's underway, a portion of the Citigroup contract, an eight-year, multi-billion dollar contract. They may assess all those costs on customers. If you add up all the debt that's just at the front end of their program of what they want to incur for a power plant, operating capital, first two years of operating losses, and the $2 million that they've already spent this year, that's close to $500 million. You divide that out by customers, that's $2,800 in debt that this power authority is incurring for every customer. Now, hopefully, it won't be apportioned out that way, and people have a chance to pay it off, but again, you may not find out what your portion of that debt is until it's too As we raised in June, and has still not been addressed, if you as a county, as decision-makers and policymakers, choose to leave the power authority once the Citigroup contract is approved by the executive board of the power authority, if you want to do that, one of two things has to happen. You will have to pay for all of your constituents' exit fees to the power authority. Those could be millions of dollars, depending on how much debt and obligation they've incurred. Or, you will have to force all of your constituents to pay those exit fees. So, your constituents who never knew about a program, didn't know they were going to be signed up for it, didn't know any commitment had been made on their behalf, suddenly may get a bill for hundreds of dollars if they're a residential customer, to thousands, or tens of thousands of dollars if they're a large industrial or commercial user, because you wanted to get out of the program. So, effectually, once you're in and the obligations are incurred, which may happen next week, next month, you're in forever. And that's, I think, as the chairman said, a critical decision that really needs to be thought through. I want to address very quickly the issue of joint and several liability, and I'm not an attorney. I've watched a lot of LA law, but here's, here's what the issue is. Under the state law that created CCA, PG&E and Edison customers cannot be harmed by the creation or the failure of a CCA. So, if this thing fails, and it's interesting, the power authority would draw analogies to energy service providers during the energy crisis, because many of those did fail, and their customers came back to the utilities, and many of them cost the rest of our customers millions. So, the state learned from that. The law prohibits that from happening again. So, what is at issue is, the utilities have asked for a mechanism so that if this CCA fails, our customers who didn't go to the CCA don't have to pay millions of dollars in bad decisions. That's what's at issue. Some way that has to be dealt with. The way we're proposing is probably a combination of two ways. One is posting a bond, and the Power Authorities Council addressed that briefly. The two utilities have come up with a mechanism based on the size of this and the portfolio, a quarter billion dollars worth of power sales per year. We estimated, we created a mechanism, and it's being discussed at the PUC, that might result in a $200 million bond amount being placed to protect our and Edison's customers from, should there be a collapse of the CCA. The power authority, in what Ms. Lockhart just called reasonable, has proposed a bond amount of about $100,000. So, you can, I think you can tell how far apart, then, the two entities are. The, the mechanism that the power authority is suggesting we use is the mechanism that the energy service providers were able to use and set up before the energy crisis. We learned some important lessons from that, the whole state did. So, it's not in anyone's interest to repeat that and not have protections in place should there be a collapse of the CCA. The other issue, then, is the joint and several liability issue. And I have to correct what Mr. Haglund said and what the Power Authorities Council, Ms. Lockhart, continued to say. The, the agreements that you've entered into actually don't prohibit joint and several liability. They say there won't be any unless otherwise agreed to by the power authority. So, you actually do have the ability to agree to joint and several liability, and our position is, our customers have to be protected. So, either post a bond that's adequate and provide us a way for whatever is not going to be adequate to recover those costs, should there be a failure of the CCA, or the service agreement can't be signed and the program probably can't go forward. And again, there's state law that governs this, and there's PUC regulation that governs this, and that's what we're all trying to work through. So, it won't be resolved here today. It'll be resolved at the commission in all likelihood. Hopefully, it won't take more legislation, but it's, it's an enormous issue, and because this is the first CCA, it has to be worked out here. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on, as I said at the beginning, the concerns we had in June are every bit in place, in fact, even magnified by what's happened over the last five months or so. And new concerns have arisen for us, and that is essentially that the process is broken. We didn't understand the process at the beginning, why you'd be forced to make decisions and lock yourselves in as policymakers before you knew all the information. We didn't understand it then, but you received assurances in this very chamber that you'd have ample time to review contracts, that there would be public hearings on rates, that there'd be independent review of contracts, and so that there'd be no surprises. Everyone would have a voice and a chance to participate. Instead, what we've seen, for, with no justification, is a meeting held with about 24 hours' notice, at which rates were approved, which were designed in private. There were no public meetings or hearings about those rates. Good news is, they're preliminary, and hopefully, they'll be adjusted. Bad news is, under those rates, industrial and commercial customers who are PG&E customers will pay more in CCA rates than they would pay to PG&E. Again, I'm sure that'll be fixed. The other things that happened were a power service agreement was approved and a commencement notice was voted on, all of this on October 15th. 24 hours' notice, no discussion, no advance warning, no opportunity to review the power services agreement beyond maybe 24 hours. All of which is directly contrary to the promises made in this chamber and in chambers throughout the region. In 14 separate cities and counties, representations were made that none of that would happen, and instead, in fact, all of it happened on October 15th. It doesn't give us a lot of confidence, it doesn't give many of our customers who we're talking to a lot of confidence, that the rest of the promises are going to be met as well. That additional rates and final rates will be actually designed in public, customer input. That customers will have adequate notice and ability to opt out and know exactly what they're opting into or out of. Those are promises that have been made, along with the open process promises that have been made, and, and we're just, we're concerned that, and our customers are concerned that those promises won't be kept. So, today, different from June, we actually are here to suggest that you vote to leave the power authority. And we don't actually suggest that you vote to leave the power authority forever. We've, we would suggest that you leave the power authority until it can be fixed, until the process is cured, until you know critical bits, pieces of information that could cost you and your customers millions of dollars. There's no reason that you don't have the right to that information. You're a 40% stake, you're the largest entity in this power authority, you have the absolute most to lose, and you have no voice. You have one vote, which is diluted on the power authority. You're not a member of the executive committee. They had a vacancy that they just filled last week. They could have filled it with your representative, and they chose not to. So, you have the opportunity now, before millions of dollars of costs are accrued to you, which will happen as soon as the Citigroup contract is approved by their executive board, before that happens, you have the chance to take a step back and say, fix your process, get your numbers right, show us you're going to deliver rate savings. Then, we will commit our county and our constituents to a program that this, that is this important, this critical, and this expensive. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? There are a few questions, Mr. Nelson, if you wouldn't mind, there are a few questions that I have, if you would allow me to ask.
Please.
Ms. Lockhart, would you mind stepping up? Because I'm, Mr. Nelson's saying, you know, he's not a lawyer, and I would be honest with you, there are masses of documents, and while Mr. Diaz, my deputy, has read all of them, I have not.
Yes, sir.
So, I, a couple of things. You made a comment that once the power authority got started, the board was essentially stuck, that there was no way for them to get out. In the joint powers agreement, there is a provision for them to leave on six months' notice, and there's a freezing provision. So, I was interested in what, what the basis of your statement was.
What I hope I said and what I meant to say was, in effect, it will be very difficult for you to get out. You, you can terminate, and you have to give six months' notice, and the, the power authority has promised, add it to the list of promises, that they wouldn't incur any more costs on your behalf. But what I said before that is, the, the effect of that termination is, you as a county will either have to pay millions of dollars to the power authority in an exit fee, or you will force all of your constituents to pay that same amount to the power authority. So, it's a, it's a pretty hard stop decision for you to make, which, again, they've incurred a million and a half or $2 million so far, that, and then they have bond issues that they want to do. So, it could be, if you decide to make this decision in December, after the Citigroup contract has been approved, you may be voting to incur a multimillion dollar cost, either on yourself or on your constituents.
Is my understanding incorrect that the PUC has to approve exit fees?
You, that is incorrect.
That is incorrect.
The power authority has the, the right to charge exit fees, just like PG&E does, for costs that have been incurred on their customers' behalf. They're incurring costs right now, assuming that they have you as a customer, but in the power service agreement that they approved on the 15th, they said they, they're not going to actually charge, you, you don't have the full obligation to pay them back for those costs until their executive committee approves the Citigroup contract. Once the executive committee approves the Citigroup contract, they can then assess you your share of the $1.5, $2 million that they've already spent.
The, you made another statement that I confused me, and that was, you said the constituents would be in without having a choice. It was my understanding that, in fact, there is a choice, that the constituents have to opt in or out, I'm not sure which.
Customers actually are, under the law and under the regulation, are automatically opted in. They'll receive, under the power authority's plan, two direct mailings from the power authority, and then two bill inserts in the PG&E or the Edison bill, notifying them of their, of their ability to opt out. But they, if they, if they take no action, if they miss those, if they miss the deadline, they would not be able to opt out. And they're not, unlike many other programs, are actually given a choice to opt in. In this case, the legislature wrote the law to actually automatically put customers in without them actually having to say anything.
But they do have an opportunity not to take the CCA as their provider.
When, yeah, when their phase-in schedule happens, they'll have those notices and they'll have that chance. What they won't have the chance to do is if you as a county decide to opt out next month, or two months after the Citigroup contract has been approved by the executive board, and millions of dollars have been accrued to you, they won't have any say in that. And there, again, as we read PA1 and the power services agreement, you're responsible for that. And either you would pay it, or it would have to be assessed to all of your constituents. Our assumption is, it wouldn't be fair to assess that to your constituents before they even had a chance to opt out. So, in all likelihood, you would be forced to pay that amount.
Lockhart, in the process, I'm, I'm sorry, we haven't spoken before, I've spoken with Mr. Blazing, who I know is on vacation. I discussed with him last spring the various types of risk that were there, including the one that Mr. Nelson just identified. And he discussed with me the actions that the authority was taking to attempt to provide transfer of risk insurance for not just reentry fees for customers, but also the exit fee for the opt-out. And in fact, there was a discussion about including that cost as a cost of administration of the program. Has that changed since last spring?
No, that has not changed.
So, so it is the intention of the authority to, again, I know that the vehicle hasn't been decided, and the amount hasn't been decided, but I'm going to use the word insurance. It is the intent of the authority to provide insurance, both for the reentry fees for consumers and for the exit fees for the members of the authority. Is that correct?
Now, on that one, I need to look to Dave Orth or Tom on that issue, because they have been addressing which insurance provisions, planning to purchase and, and-
And I recognize, I'm, I'm using the word insurance because I think that's easier for everyone to understand, but some vehicle of risk transfer.
Yes, David Orth, I think you know me, general manager of Kings River Conservation District.
And I recognize, I'm using the word "insurance" because I think that's easier for everyone to understand, but some vehicle of risk transfer.
Yes, David Orth, I think you know me, general manager of Kings River Conservation District, serving as the agent to the power authority. The implementation plan that was submitted to the Public Utilities Commission twice, and approved by the commission twice, expressly addresses this issue and states our intent to establish a bond or an insurance to cover the anticipated liabilities that come from member withdrawal. Part of this goes back to then the discussion that's underway with the PUC Energy Division staff as to what the appropriate level of that bond should be. But there's not a dispute over whether or not we intend to post a bond or require insurance. The question is, let's identify the risk, and let's identify how best to mitigate that risk. Another key element of the implementation plan that's being conveniently overlooked here is that we've committed to a one-year transfer period. The intent is to have an orderly return to service, to bundled customers, or bundled service, so that we can mitigate to the fullest extent possible in the energy market those risks. It's not just a, you're stuck with whatever. The value of the power commodity that's being purchased for you will have some value in the marketplace that we will be able to recover, and through an orderly transition, our intent is to do that to the fullest extent possible, and then back that up with reserves and bonds and insurance.
If I could just, one piece of clarification, David, maybe you could help. The bond issue that we're talking about and that is referenced in the implementation plan only addresses those costs incurred by a termination of the program, or termination of, I believe it's just termination of the program, or failure or collapse of the program, or involuntary return of CCA customers to the utilities.
I understand there's a dispute between PG&E and the authority to address that risk. My question was, are you intending to insure against the other risk, which is the withdrawal risk?
Correct.
And the answer to that question is yes, if I understood, Mr., he's nodding back there, so. So that's a separate risk, a separate way to insure the members of the authority, which would not really involve all. It's no different than making sure that you have liability insurance in case somebody hits someone with their car as they're driving.
So I just have to, just to be perfectly clear, what Mr. Orth just nodded to, because I don't think it's actually true. If down the road, a year from now, two years from now, the power authority has incurred hundreds of millions of dollars to build a power plant, those cost about $500 million these days, $50 million in working capital, their current plan calls for them to lose about $2 million a year for the first two years, all of those costs and debts will be incurring. They do not have a plan to insure you, should your county leave and be responsible, and your constituents as power customers, be responsible for paying them those costs. The implementation plan and the power service agreement are crystal clear. Your constituents will pay the power authority for costs that they incur. It will be hundreds of millions of dollars. They're not planning to insure you for that risk. They're not planning to insure CCA customers that if you change your mind a year from now, or two or three years from now, you won't have to pay anything. They don't have any money. You will have to pay Citigroup for its multi-billion dollar contract, whatever amount is above market. You will have to pay for the construction of a power plant, or however far along they've gotten if they stop construction. Those costs will be paid by your constituents, or they will be paid by you. And I think their intent is to exempt the county as an entity from having to pay, but your constituents will pay those costs. That's the plan, that's how it's done.
I don't know how to respond, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Orth and Mr. Blazing have both represented to me that the authority is actively working to obtain insurance for exactly the costs that Mr. Nelson is discussing, and I simply, I don't know how to respond, other than maybe to ask Mr. Orth to respond.
There are two pots of costs, at least, maybe more than that. I think it's important for the board and the membership to understand that the bond and the insurance that we're talking about is primarily focused on the costs of return of customers to bundled service. That would be primarily the cost to protect the ratepayer, as PG&E has fought very hard to ensure exists and remains in place. That's the bond and the insurance that I referred to earlier. The costs associated with the Citigroup contract, the costs associated with any future decisions to invest in infrastructure, Mr. Nelson has conveniently ignored the fact that the power authority board, under the agreement that they executed with KRCD, made it expressly clear that I cannot incur any costs or recover those costs for baseload facilities or other generation capacity until the power authority board agrees to such. But let's assume for a moment that the board looks at the economics and says, yes, we should invest in a baseload plant. The bondholders who acquire the bonded indebtedness to purchase that plant are ultimately the parties who are at risk there. It's not the customer, it's not the county of Tulare, excuse me, or any other power authority member. It's going to be ultimately the bondholder who secured, or who offered the money for us to build the plant, that in the event everybody leaves the program and no longer purchased power, is going to be left holding the bag. Now, we've talked about exit fees. There will be an exit fee charged to customers, as established by the power authority on an annual basis, to reflect what it believes is necessary and reasonable and appropriate to recover and mitigate some of that risk. But it's not as simple as assuming that all of the risks that exist are automatically going to fall back on the customer, or fall back on the member of the power authority. There are a number of mitigation tools and techniques that are going to be used to keep the program properly risk managed.
It's my understanding that during this opt-out period, that our customers, or us as individuals, will have the right to opt out during these mailings without any cost incurred by us from PG&E or from the authority. Correct?
There is no obligation. Yes, go ahead.
Yes, that is correct. There is no obligation if they opt out during that time period.
Mr. Chair?
And the amount of that obligation, if they opt out after that, has not been determined yet?
That is correct.
And when will that be determined?
That will be identified initially through the terms and conditions of the Energy Services Agreement with Citigroup Energy. We'll identify to the membership the terms and conditions of that agreement, and the obligations that lie within, and how we would intend to recover any obligations under that contract from members and customers who subsequently depart. Again, it's important to recognize that it's the power authority's Board of Directors, of which you are a member, that have the authority and the responsibility, under the PUC rule and regulation, to establish the recovery mechanism for those costs. So it's two-part determination. One is, what does the contract provide? And secondly, how does the power authority Board of Directors elect to address that cost relative to power sales to customers?
And is it still, if I could ask, earlier you were trying to negotiate with Citigroup a 3/10 of a cent per kilowatt exit fee cost? Is that still in the realm?
I'd prefer not to answer that. The terms of our negotiations with Citigroup are still highly sensitive and confidential.
Okay, fine.
But our intent is to try to create rate stability and predictability. Those have been rate-setting policy conditions that the authority board has now established formally through their adoption of a rate-setting policy.
Okay. And out of respect to that process, then, just then as a mile marker, if it helps you figure this out, over the summer, the goal was a 3/10 of a kilowatt exit fee cost. So you could just, then it's just math, if that's the amount, and it may not be.
Yeah.
So 3/10 of a cent would be about $18 a month for a typical residential customer who uses 600 kilowatt-hours a month. So it'd be about $200 a year, depending on how long the exit fee they intend to cover. So if it's eight years of a Citigroup contract, a couple hundred dollars a year, it could be, what, $1,500 for a residential customer. It probably wouldn't be that, but that's probably the upper boundary of what it could be.
Mr. Orth, if this program does not go through down the road, because we can't make the 5% guarantee, now, what point in time, or what is the liability of Tulare County for the costs that were incurred to get to that point?
There's no liability if the program does not move forward.
To any of the members?
To any of the members.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Counsel, we have this for closed session.
Rest for closed session, there is no exposure to litigation at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of our CAO, Mr. Russo. You, and I'd like to disclose, I've not had conversations with other board members or our CAO. I did discuss a confidential attorney-client privilege letter that was sent by our county council yesterday, so I've not really discussed this openly with any of the other board members. But, Mr. Russo, at one time, you had just expressed a concern, and I know that on the, I believe, October 15th meeting, that you were the lone dissiding vote at that meeting to continue. Have all of your questions been answered to your satisfaction? Are you comfortable moving on? I just want a yes or no.
Can I respond?
I want yes or no. You can respond, but I'd like a yes or no answer from you.
I would say no. Thank you.
I would ask that same question of counsel.
Mr. Chairman, unlike your CAO, it's not my job to make policy decisions, very fortunately. I would tell you that there are substantial risks. As I've said, I think, throughout this process, we have been advised by counsel and staff for the authority that they are attempting, as best possible, to mitigate against those risks, using various risk management, risk transfer tools. I have no reason to think that they're not acting in good faith. So to the extent that they provide insurance, that will protect you from some of the risk. If I can give an example, we have $25 million insurance for general liability. If you have a judgment that goes against you for $35 million, $10 million of that would then be your additional responsibility. The degree of your responsibility is going to depend, at least in part, on how good the risk transfer is. And at this point, it's in negotiation, is that a fair way to discuss it? But it has not yet been decided or purchased, in part because there is a disagreement with, between PG&E, and I don't know if Southern Cal Edison is also in disagreement regarding the amount. The amount that I had heard was $100 million, so it's doubled since last Thursday, when we had a conversation, I had a conversation with some PG&E staff and their attorney. Nothing can go forward until that issue is resolved, really. So to a certain extent, I guess it says you rely on the PUC, in part, to protect you. If you were to determine, after all the risk transfer vehicles have been purchased or obtained, that you weren't satisfied with that, you could then give notice of withdrawal, and we could address the issue of the entry fee. And at that point, there might very well be a dispute with the authority regarding the extent to which they've acted in good faith, et cetera. Mr. Nelson was correct, you do not have a weighted vote on this board. You have a single vote, one of, I believe it's 12 people, is that right? 12?
13.
13, sorry. So you have 1/13 of the control.
That's not correct.
Not correct. Oh, good. Mr. Orth is going to correct me.
I'm sorry. The board did work out a fairly elaborate voting scale. The county has about a 20% voting share based on your size. It's half of your load gives you the vote. You are the largest single vote holder on the board. So it's not as 1/13, it's a weighted average.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. But you're not in complete control. That's certainly the case. So as you know, I'm always in favor of transfer of risk, and again, I have no reason to believe that Mr. Orth or Mr. Blazing, who I've spoken to about this, are not acting in good faith in determining this. Also, your risk manager, Brian Froma, spoke with, I believe it was with Mr. Orth last week, regarding this, and again, the amount has to be determined first, before you know what kind of vehicle you'll use, insurance, a bond, et cetera. But there is effort being made to negotiate for the purchase of those vehicles. So there's risk in everything you do. I believe that you are as well-protected as you can be at this point. That's not to say in the future, you may not decide that, you're not as well-protected as you like. And if you were to decide to exit, the later in the process you exit, the greater your risk of being assessed an exit fee that is substantial and exceeds any insurance that may be obtained. At some point in time, and I don't know if this is still planned, at some point in time there was discussion of self-insurance for that risk. Is that still?
That's still an option, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, but I'm not sure whether the right time to speak on this issue.
We're here to learn all we can learn.
Okay. My name is Hunter Stern. I'm a business representative of Local 1245 of the Interstellar Brother Electrical Workers. We represent electric utility workers here in this county, and as well as every other county north of Kern. And in fairness to both PG&E, for whom we represent, PG&E workers, and the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority, and Kings River Conservation District as its agent, we simply don't support or favor community choice aggregation in any area, at any time. We think it's a flawed law, similar to the flawed deregulation laws that were passed 10 years ago, and I submitted a letter to the board back in September, September 17th. The reason we oppose it simply is it's bad for our members. There's every likelihood that some of the problems that occurred in many of our employers as a result of the deregulation could occur again under a community choice aggregation. And again, it's not an issue with this particular plan, it's community choice aggregation in concept, as the legislature approved it in 2002. Specifically, as a result of the deregulation of the electric industry in 1996, PG&E went bankrupt. Lasting Municipal Utility District, for which we have members, has experienced, ever since then, severe financial problems, and each one of its elected board members were recalled. And the city of Lowdy also continues to have problems financially, again, dating back to the deregulation in the electric industry and the volatility of the electric rates at that time. So that's why we oppose it. We would suggest that you oppose it for the following reasons. The first is, and it's already been discussed to some degree, is the scale of exposure. Even though it's limited, it is this area, and it's your constituents who would face that exposure. But more importantly, from our point of view, there's a lack of expertise within the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority, and there's a reliance on consultants and on an outside company. And in fact, a power services agreement is a deal for that organization, the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority, to rely on one energy provider. And therefore, there's a potential for undue influence or undue control from that one provider. Again, the contract will tell you exactly to what extent the relationship is, but it's that difference, it's that contractual commitment or contractual relationship versus a regulated utility. And CCA does the same thing that the deregulation did, is it removes the... And C C A does the same thing that the deregulation did, is it removes the generation issues or the generation portion of the electric utility business from the integrated utility model, which has served Californian residents all throughout the state for 80 years successfully. Finally, it's this idea of competition. A lot of people say, well, people need a choice, community choice aggregation. There's not competition, and in fact, the way electricity is supplied currently, P G and E or Edison or San Diego Gas and Electric purchase electricity from literally hundreds of suppliers. Some are like Citigroup Energy Services or independent power producers, and we represent several, our members work for several of those independent power producers. Some are cogeneration, some are renewable sources, but again, there are hundreds of energy suppliers currently. You just don't see them as they, the utility, P G and E or Southern California Edison, is the one that's obligated to make sure that your constituents have power. And they purchase electricity from all these wide variety of sources. And so therefore, the rate you get and the result you get is a blended cost. And fair, as you've heard today, it's a very complex business to start with. And what hurt some of our employers, not P G and E, but Lassen and Lowdy during the deregulation, was that they did not have a diversity of sources. They had to rely on the open market and other sources where they had to pay the freight, the going rate, and that rate was significantly higher than they anticipated. So, again, not to shoot arrows either at P G and E or at San Joaquin Valley Power Authority, but we believe that this is a, that community choice aggregation should not go forward, that the legislature, after making the mistake that it made to deregulate the electric industry, didn't take the necessary steps and thought about how to go forward with community choice aggregation or something like that. And the best and most reliable, cost-effective insurance for electric utility customers in this county and in others throughout the state is to maintain the current model that's in place today. Thank you very much for the chance to speak.
Counsel, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that the executive committee of the aggregation is going to meet this coming week or very shortly. When are you going to, excuse me, when are you going to consider the power agreement?
Mr. Chairman, are you referring to the agreement between Kings River and Citigroup? The energy services agreement?
Right.
There, we have no, nothing scheduled. The executive committee does not have a meeting scheduled at this time to consider that agreement. That agreement is still subject of negotiations between Kings River Conservation District and Citigroup, and so, you know.
My question to counsel is, at that point, that that agreement is reached by this group, does that further obligate us on liability? Or is, do we have an opt-out position because the P U C is still, hasn't agreed to the other issues?
Well, my understanding is that the city agreement is what I would refer to as a financing agreement, is that a fair assessment?
Well, it is the, I should allow Mr. Orth to respond to that because it's between Kings River and City, although the power authority needs to specifically approve that document. And so that is going to be the purchase document of the generation capacity needed to fulfill our obligations within the territory.
If I may ask a question then of Mr. Orth, without, I hope I'm not intruding on your negotiation, but as a general rule, in financing agreements, the longer you're in them, the more you owe. It would be the way that I would simplify and describe it, and I would assume that this would not be any different.
That is correct. And let me, just for the board's benefit and yours, recall that K R C D went out for a request for proposals from the energy community and received a number of proposals, which we reviewed. Those proposals were solicitations to become the full requirements power supplier for this program, which would be all of the energy products and all of the ancillary services and support services that are necessary to support a customer who receives electrical service. And that is a contract that K R C D is negotiating under the guidance of the Power Authority Board. The term of that agreement is through at least 2015, because that is the timeframe that they've obligated us to provide the rate predictability and stability defined by that 2 percent cap. So, in answer to your question, this is an eight-year, potentially an eight-year contract, and the more years equals the more cost.
So, I guess, Mr. Chairman, my answer to you would be if K R C D enters into the agreement with Citigroup and it's then ratified, and my understanding is it doesn't have to be ratified by the entire board, just by the executive committee, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And then you see it and decide that it's much more than you want it, you can serve notice that you wish to opt out of the authority and you are, even though there's a six-month notice period, you are, your costs are frozen at that point. I don't know what costs would be incurred immediately upfront, but the earlier you opted out, the lower your exposure would be. And that, of course, is assuming that there's been no risk transfer vehicle for exit fees. If there is a risk transfer vehicle, then that reduces your exposure.
Mr. Chairman, could I answer your question in two parts? You asked a related question about whether or not these issues with the P U C regarding joint and sever liability prevent the program from moving forward. And I think it is fair to represent that we, the collective we, cannot sign an agreement with City or anybody to be our full requirements energy provider until we reach resolution of these issues with the Public Utility Commission, or more preferably, indirect negotiations with P G and E. But we have to identify specifically the joint and sever liability issue and resolve it to the satisfaction of the P U C, because we will have to deliver to them an executed service agreement that includes that issue as a condition of moving forward. So we have to get that issue resolved first. Secondly, when the energy service agreement is ready for public review, it's important to recognize that it will go to the K R C D Board of Directors under a duly noticed, open public meeting. It will also go to your executive committee of the Power Authority Board, which is also a standing committee and therefore subject to Brown Act. So the agreement will be out, and if you elect, for whatever reason, to conclude that the 5 percent savings and the 2 percent discount is not solid enough or good enough or has too much risk attached to it, then I think you can off-ramp under the joint powers agreement, and we're not going to buy power for somebody who's noticed us prior to signing that agreement that they don't intend to live by the terms of that agreement.
But then would we be liable at that point for all the costs incurred into getting to that point?
You're not obligated for any cost of the program until you begin taking power service under the program.
And further, Mr. Chairman, I just might clarify that under the power services agreement, which we have approved and executed with Kings River, those costs can only be funded with proceeds from the C C A. So what I mean by that is that as we derive income from the sale at a discount of our electricity, it is from that revenue generated from those proceeds that the upfront costs that K R C D has invested these last five years would be reimbursed, and then in accordance with a schedule established by the authority board.
Essentially, Mr. Chairman, K R C D is assuming the risk up to a certain point as to whether or not this is an enterprise that's going to go forward. If it doesn't go forward, the liability to the members is not assessed to them, it's assessed, I mean, you've already incurred it, it goes with K R C D.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman and board members, these are issues that obviously this board is, wants more information about and is expressing a concern. It is the same concern that we as public administrators, your county's partners in this endeavor are concerned about as well. And so every step of the way, we have tried to structure these agreements, and we have structured these agreements such that the obligations and liabilities do not flow through to the underlying membership, that they remain firewalled at the authority level. It would be imprudent for the city of Hanford to enter into an agreement, or Kings County, or the city of Clovis, all the rest of the partners to enter into an agreement whereby we haven't properly mitigated these risks. And so, as Mr. Orth indicates, we look towards a mitigation of the joint and sever liability as something that must happen in order for the program to go forward, in order for us to approve the E S A, and in order to be consistent with our underlying documents. And so, all of the members share your concern, and we all share the absolute desire and commitment to not obligate our entities to a program that is unwise. But we also see a unique opportunity to fill a role in this valley, which is to, you know, take into our own hands a bit of our destiny with regard to these matters. Never before, whether in this forum here today, or in June, or all of the other board chambers and council chambers, have we so openly debated these energy issues. We understand the stake that P G and E and Edison would have in this matter and would like to protect, but we have tools given to us by the legislature. We have inherent tools in terms of financing that make this program a viable project that we can implement on behalf of our constituencies, and I'd urge you to consider that.
Duly informed, and bring it back to the board. Mr. Cox, would you like to add anything?
No, I originally voted for this, and, you know, my level of being uncomfortable has risen to the point to where, you know, I wish we were further along with the agreement with City Court where we had some solid answers. It still sounds as though we don't know what all of the risks are. We know there, county council, there are potential risks, but we don't know. I am a person that tends to like to go into things with my eyes wide open, knowing what my risks are. And at that point, I, you know, I will acknowledge, well, it's a risk, am I willing to take that risk or not? And I don't think we can identify clearly what the risk might be, whether that's $10 or $10 million, and I'm just using those as, you know, hypotheticals, but I don't like going into things with my eyes closed. I like to know exactly what my risk might be. And when I say exact, I mean exact.
I think Mr. Cox's statement, we do know what the risks are, we don't know what the amount of the risk would be. It's estimated, but we don't know what it is, and we do not have the insurance that the risk transfer vehicle purchased as of yet.
I mean, those things being said, and then having Mr. Russo on the spot, you know, at this point, I'm not, you know, inclined to move forward with this, without having those questions answered to my satisfaction.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond if I could. I can appreciate the concerns that the board members have for risk. I'm reminded of the risk that we were put at when we went to go self-insurance on our workers' comp, and people pointed out all the risks that we were taking and so forth. I think it's important to remember that there is risk in everything. There's a risk in staying with the status quo, although maybe you don't think it's a risk to see a 13 percent increase over 300 percent base amount. I look at my bill the other day, and I get over the base amount about the first day of the month. And so I'm looking at a huge increase to my power bill based upon the numbers I'm hearing today that Edison's asking for, and I assume P G and E will ask for too, and a 4 and 1/2 percent overall increase. So there are risks involved in staying where we are. And I think sometimes the problem here is that we kind of look at this and say, well, there's a risk here, and there's no risk where we are. There's a risk here. There's a risk in staying where we are. I'm very happy that P G and E is so concerned about our welfare. I'm sad that Edison apparently isn't so concerned about our welfare. I mean, 3/4 of the Clary County is covered by Edison, but they haven't said a word of opposition to this. I'm being a little bit sarcastic, but I think we have to understand, these are hardly disinterested people who stand in front of us and encourage us not to go this direction. They have a vested interest. The gentleman who represents the employee union was very direct. I'm here in opposition because of my employees. So he's not a disinterested person. We are here as disinterested people in the sense that we want to do what's best for our constituencies. There are risks involved in going forward, but I don't think anything ever has been accomplished in this country by people individually or by corporations or businesses or entities as government entities without taking risk. Everything requires risk to be taken. I see that there are still opportunities, if this thing were to go sideways, if the contract came back and didn't show the 5 percent savings and the 2 percent cap, we could bail out of this thing still and minimize our risk, because it's been pointed out that everybody else is in the same boat. This is, it's not just unique to Clary County. I spoke with the city manager of Dinuba today, they have no intention of backing away from this, nor have I heard of anybody else that's been part of this process from the very beginning and therefore probably has a greater understanding of than we have. They're still in this thing apparently to continue on. So I am comfortable with continuing on with the process, and I would vote to reaffirm the vote of participation at this point in time.
Anyone else want to comment?
Mr. Chairman, there's no further comments.
I'd like to comment. To me, you brought up a good point, risk versus reward. And a 2 and 1/2 percent reward versus the risk, I'm not sure that I'm willing to take that risk for 2 and 1/2 percent. These, what the, that's what it boiled down to, if you figure your total bill, only 2 and 1/2 percent approximately is the savings on your electricity. So, from middle school of businesses, risk versus reward, and it's a very minimal reward. And one thing that really, in the back of my mind, is just from my experience in business, is that there were years that we were taught, and we've been taught in the business school, to vertically integrate. And this happened quite a bit in the agricultural industry, where people who produced the crops started marketing the crops or started processing the crops. And unfortunately, most of those endeavors failed, and a lot of these people lost their farms because they did not have the expertise to go into the next phase of marketing or processing. And I look at the good people that sit on this commission, they're all good people, but the industry of power generation and buying power on spot markets and all these other factors involved in transmission are quite complicated. And I do not have that expertise to manage this type of program. I would say that most of us do not have the expertise or the knowledge to manage a utility I look at P G and E, I look at Edison, and I know they're monopolies. I'm not real happy, I'm not a happy consumer, being put in the position that we are in. But I have to look beyond my own biases, the fact that this business is complicated, and you have to have and you have to have competent people run this business. So I reluctantly, as I was before, not in favor of risking whatever amount for 2% return. So that's, I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond if I could in part, because it's important to remember the breakup of the powered industry, where at one time, the monopolies did everything. I mean, they did the generation, they did the transmission, they did the billing, and I think it's important to point out here that we're talking about one segment of that, which is the generation. PG&E and most of the major utilities were required under the previous flawed law to divest themselves of much of their generation capacity. So in a sense, they are on the market, just as we would be, buying energy. They don't have to know how it's produced, they don't have to know, they just simply go out and buy on the market what they can buy to meet their demand at the lowest price. I believe that that kind of thing is not as, does not require the kind of expertise that would be required if we were going to say, okay, who's going to run this thing? Who's going to, who's going to take care of the transmission responsibilities? Who's going to take care of the billing? This is something which is, that's why it's so important, this contract that would be had with Citibank, is that that becomes their responsibility to acquire this power. Previously, it was done by the ISO, state of California was buying all the power and then giving it back out to the utility, and selling it back out to the utility companies. So if the state of California could do it, I think we probably could do it. So anyway, I just think it's not quite the same from a knowledge base, it's not quite the same as running an entire operation. We're talking about the acquisition of the purchasing of power.
Well, I think I look at it too, as even with this group, we're a mom and pop store compared to the whole overall electric market, buying electricity compared to the two entities that are in place now. The one thing that always bothered me, and I personally have experienced this, and thank you to the state of California with deregulation, it brought us a lot of grief, but you need to have a large amount of the production under your control. That's just pure, just pure logic. And I've experienced this in the packing business, when we did not have enough production, but we had the capacity. And that's why I fault the state of California, and it's not anybody sitting out here, but we have, have probably gone down the wrong path. The other part is, you need to control as much of your business as you can, and when you do not control the delivery, that also takes adds to the lack of controlling your production. So there's some things I've personally experienced from the lack of controlling production that makes it very difficult to do business, even though I know that PG&E and Edison has divested themselves of most of their production capabilities, and they're out on the market just like everybody else is. But I feel a lot more comfortable if KRDC was able to provide 70 to 80% of the capacity that this group would need. It's just controlling your own destiny to some degree. The other point that bothers me is the fact that we're going into this 2525 or 2020, to where you have to have 20% of your production of your, your electricity has to be from renewable resources, and those renewable resources are very scarce.
Not in my district, they're called cows.
We just have to, we just have to plug them in. So, you know, there's going to be a lot of competition for that source of power, and that will also have an influence on prices. So with that...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, you know, the discussion each time becomes, I don't want to say more enlightening, it becomes more complicated, if you will, and more and more to think about, and I apologize for being a little under the weather today. I did choose to come, however, so I'm here and I'm listening. I don't live at an address in a county that would be served by the community choice aggregation, and the only constituents that I've heard from in the county about how they feel about this, I mean, we have these discussions, I know it's reported in the press, I don't know who's talking about it, I don't know what their opinions are, other than me personally, and the rest of you may have heard from other constituents, and I'd be happy to hear about that, with simply a letter from the Farm Bureau supporting this effort, believing that for its members, it would be a good thing. A lot has been said today about protection. I got to tell you, I don't feel very protected, and maybe I'm like Supervisor Worthley, receiving my bills every month, I don't think I'm protected from anybody, anywhere. And all of that being said, this is one supervisor that doesn't believe, I'm not ready to derail yet, especially when I hear there's still opportunity. We can see the contract and see the numbers that are there. I'm still going to hang in. That's enough from me. Put some more Purell on my hands, give me all of you.
I was trying to extend to fish and cut bait. I would move that we reaffirm the vote of participation in the community choice aggregation program.
I'll second that.
Second, push the button.
Wait, wait.
Push the button.
Oh, okay. The vote is two to three, the motion fails.
Supervisor Conway, your vote was voted as no. Did you want a yes vote or a no vote?
Could you put it back on the screen?
My fever that high? I don't know what button that is.
The steps are very long, does it? She's second, I would think she would have voted yes.
Is that what you're showing?
I'm showing Supervisor Ashida, Supervisor Cox, and Supervisor Worthley as no votes, and Supervisor Cox and Supervisor Ennis as yes votes.
You said Cox twice.
Can we re, can we do the vote over?
We have to do another motion.
Now, can we just put it back in the machine and do it whole?
To clarify, Supervisor Worthley, your motion was to reaffirm participations, correct?
Yes, continue on.
So a yes vote would be to continue, a no vote would be to get out. Got it. Okay, so let's do it again then. Okay, start voting.
See, it's off. It's, it's...
I voted no. Saying I voted yes.
I voted no.
We'll do a roll call vote on this one. Supervisor Ennis?
No.
Supervisor Ashida?
No.
Supervisor Worthley?
Yes.
Supervisor Cox?
No.
Supervisor Conway? Two yes, three no.
Okay, so it wasn't just my fever.
Pardon?
It wasn't just me.
Something's messed up with the machine. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned a second motion, I would think. The motion was to reaffirm, we're not, do we need to have a vote that would say we're not going to participate? Affirmative act?
Very quickly, how this would be...
I mean, that's the implication, I think, but I think you probably need to have a second motion that would take affirmative act. Well, why don't we just do it, so then it's clear?
I would say that you could, based on the way that this was agendized, that you could vote to, since you're not reaffirming, you're voting in effect to terminate.
So moved.
Okay, Supervisor Cox is making motion terminate our involvement.
Second.
Moving second, and push your buttons, please.
A roll call.
Do a roll call vote on this one, if that's okay. Supervisor Ennis?
Yes.
Supervisor Ashida?
Yes.
Supervisor Worthley?
No.
Supervisor Cox?
Yes.
Supervisor Conway? So we have three yes, two no, so it passes to terminate.
Okay.
I might suggest the correct, the next action would be to direct the CAO and his staff to process the appropriate notices to both the JPA and KRCD.
Mr. CAO, did you...
Our chairman nodded, I think that was your draft.
Okay, moving to public comments.
Didn't we have an addendum? We have an addendum item.
Oh, what's it? Yes, okay, addendum item one.
Okay, after rugging that, for the Chief Russo, county administrative officer, this addendum item, I apologize for it being on the addendum, it shouldn't have been, this item requests from this board to allocate a number of positions to our, what will be our new IT department, that we're going to be putting in place, and to quickly recap where we were and where we're going, in June of this year, this board voted to terminate the agreement with our external service provider, ACS. In that agreement, it required a six-month notice, which that vote and the subsequent follow-up letter to ACS informed them that we were giving them our six-month notice. The six-month notice expires December 31st, so therefore we would have to take over IT functions effective January 1st, 2008. This item in front of you today is a step in that, in that process. We've already sent a letter to ACS confirming our desire to have the contract terminate effective December 31st. We've worked out provisional costing and charges from them for the six-month period ending December 31st. This item, what it will do essentially is allocate 50 positions that will constitute our new IT department. It also has, allocates various salary bands for certain levels of the organization. And again, we are, we're kind of pushing and slash rushing this through to get the hiring process going. I fully expect that we will come back to this board in the next month or two with some, probably some cleanup items on this matter, but this essentially gets the process going. And the process is this, we're going to be hiring folks effective as soon as HR can get the word out on the street. There'll be two phases. We're going to be looking at folks who are ex-county employees, that are not subject to some of the limitations in the agreement with ACS as far as hiring and what have you. We will entertain and interview those folks and determine which one of those, which of those folks we want to help comprise our IT department. The second part of the first phase will be interviewing outside folks who are not constrained under the current agreement for employment with our organization. The second phase of the process, as I put it, will be, will be entering, will be interviewing ACS employees, current ACS employees, who will, who are not allowed to, under the terms of our contract, to join our organization prior to December 31st of 2007. So we will interview those folks, determine which one of the, which of those folks we want to help comprise our department, and we will bring those folks on in early January to fulfill the limitations as spelled out in the contract. We are going to be meeting, in the letter that I referred to earlier, confirming our decision to go forward and create our own IT department, we have requested a meeting with ACS staff, both national and local, and I pegged, might be able to speak for that, by November 9th, to work out terms of the transition from their shop to an internal department, to an internal-run department.
Any comments?
May I interrupt him? Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, because I know this is going out over the web, we are going to, the county is going to establish its positions today, and then recruitments will be open. We will not specifically be recruiting only from ACS employees, they will be free to apply, and we will interview them like we would, or process their applications, whatever it is we do, just like we would anyone else who applied. Thank you.
And we are, Peg Yates, IT Director, 221 South Booney. We are working on getting that meeting scheduled, we will have it scheduled by the 9th of November. I would just like to point out that the county is in a great position to make this really successful, and a lot of that is due to the foresight, the planning, and the leadership of our CAO. Three years ago, almost four years ago, when I first got here, we were in a situation where we had technology that was failing, and I have to say that I'm glad I only have to get bits and bites to the right bucket after the last discussion, and somebody else keeps the power going. But at that time, we did have issues going on, and because of his foresight and being able, and his vision, he put into place a process that we've been working on over the last four years to get the IT structure in a better spot. There is still more to do, but you are in a much better place today than you were three and a half, four years ago, when it was discussed that you might take IT in-house. This process is difficult, it's difficult on the county, it's difficult on the local ACS staff, but at the end, the county is going to be better for what you're doing today. So I would be happy to answer any questions that I can.
I'd like to finish up on my comments too. Thank you very much, Peg, for this comment. We are, we've established a transition team, or we're in the process of establishing an internal transition team that will help us make this successful. We have pinged various departments and asked for help from those folks, and we fully expect to get help. I've already been approached by a number of department heads, and the ones that have approached me, I appreciate your offers. We will be, we will be meeting in the next week or two to establish that team and talk about what it's going to take to make this happen. You know, I view this as kind of a, the short abbreviated CAL FIRE type of exercise, but not quite as painful as a fire incident. But at the end of the day, when early January comes around, we'll have our own folks in place, both external ex-ACS employees and what have you, that we feel will take us into the next, that will help us go forward with revitalizing our IT infrastructure. So if you have any questions about this item, I'll be happy to respond.
One quick question. Is any risk involved? Okay, don't answer.
I have to say it?
Is it a yes or a no?
I would note that this item is agendized for, well, not this item, but the issue of risk is agendized for closed session if your board wishes to adjourn to it.
Oh, so there is risk involved, is that what you're saying, Council?
What we're doing, the process that we're putting in place will, I believe, with Council's recommendation, comply with the legal risk inherent in the contract. When we meet with the ACS, quite frankly, we will ask them if they will consider waiving the restrictions that they put on their employees, but we are going to, we plan on going forward with the, with the thought that they will not waive that, and we will still make it happen. Is it going to be a bumpy road? Like I've said, the ideal way of doing it, no it isn't, but we, we've got two months to make it happen, and we have every intention of doing that.
Additionally, if I could, at the end of this, you are, from whatever pool that you draw from, going to hire the best candidates you can to continue to support Tulare County and the IT, and I believe that's where you will be in January.
Some of us started seven years ago on this quest, but we're not complaining.
Not bitter, huh?
Mr. Chairman, if there's nothing further, motion to approve, item addendum one.
Second.
See if the buttons work, Michelle.
They don't work.
Hey!
Oh, but wait a minute, we all wouldn't know.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very bizarre.
Okay, moving to item 37, public comments. Anybody wishing, in the audience wishing to address the board on matters underneath its jurisdiction? Seeing no one, we'll move to Supervisor Matters, and we'll start with Supervisor Ennis today.
Okay, yeah. Chairman Ashida and I went up to San Francisco last week for TK, and it was a self-help counties meeting. counties meeting. A lot of ideas brought forward. Found out an awful lot about congestion, and believe it or not, San Diego has the worst traffic congestion in the state. But it looks like the future possibly to our road problems could be private use, in other words, private people coming in and building roads and discharging, like you subscribe for cable TV, you subscribe to the road, and then you can travel on it. So I know the people in LA, some of the line, that SR 91 is one of those roads that has two lanes on it that people do subscribe to, and the reason they really like it is the fact they can plan their day out, and they know when they get on the highway, they're going to get home at a certain time, so they can go to their kids' activities and different things. So that looks like that could be possibly part of the future. But it was real interesting, first time I'd been to a TCAG seminar deal, and especially with the self-help counties, being that we do have Major R, so it was pretty interesting.
Supervisor Worthley?
I don't think I've ever said it.
Neither do I.
I have a few things to say. On the road, you know, since we get some of the, a lot of that money comes from registered vehicles, towing those old junkers, I'm suggesting we just need to register all of them. And I'm not being serious about that. I want to thank the chairman for his help last night. A fundraiser that's near and dear to my heart was held last night in Tulare for the Tulare Historical Museum, and he showed up and did a volunteer gig, and I appreciate that. I have an OPEB Commission meeting, we have three or four left because we have a report due to the governor by the end of the year, this Friday in Oakland. Being curiouser and curiouser, if that is such a word. This weekend, I will be participating in some activities that I'm not sure have been held before, spearheaded by the Vietnam Veterans Group. They've got some, the leaders of that group are from various cities, but spearheaded by one particular individual in my community, so he's lined me up. They're a little pre-Veterans Day, but they are to do with veterans, and that same group will be bringing that memorial wall at the end of the month to the county, the Vietnam Wall, it's not the exact wall, but the replica that travels around. And the only other thing I can think of is Saturday, the community of Tulare gets another, you know, we got the big super target? Well, Smart and Final Iris is having a ribbon cutting, so the city of Tulare is going to have a big celebration. That's it for me.
Smart and Final. When Mike and I were at the self-help conference in San Francisco, one of the things that, we took a little boat ride out to the Bay Bridge, and...
Oh, I thought you were saying Alcatraz.
It was a cruise. And the one thing I found interesting was the fact that all the steel's coming from China. We're not manufacturing any of the steel for that bridge, because we do not have the capacity, and we cannot compete.
Does it have lead in it?
And the aggregate's coming from Canada, isn't it?
And also, they have to build special equipment, like a Glomar Explorer, to put some of these sections in place. So there's a great deal of expense that's going into this bridge that is like a one-time use expense, like part of the road, so it would be temporary, and some of the equipment can only be used for special purposes. So it was very interesting. I want to state that we had a very difficult vote today. I wish the people who are involved all the success in the world. It's probably difficult, the fact that we were not in the beginning and were educated all the way along, but there were always questions coming up as to when our point of liability would take place. So I do wish them the best, and maybe someday we may become a member. So with that, Council, do we have a need for closed session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. I should note that I'm D, E, F, and H are off agenda. The balance of the items, as indicated on your agenda and addendum, are still on your closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to go after lunch first, or are you going to go through closed session?
I was going to ask if we can have a time...
Yes, we need to go to lunch first, we recess.
What time do you...
What time, sir?
Somebody needs to be back, so...
I just need to tell people what time to be here. Two?